Pan Cotty, we good?
Will now be recorded.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'm Chris Parker. I'm your vice chair, sitting in for your chair. We're not exactly sure where he is tonight, but at this time, we'll call to order the King George County Planning Commission meeting of 12 September 2023. For the record, we do have a quorum, and I will ask if you can, please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. To the public.
At this time, we'd like to take a moment of silence just to call to order the meeting and make a close invocation, or excuse me, a quick invocation. So please, just a few bed bow your heads, please. All right. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is public comment period. I will ask that if you have any public comments about the training facility or the Walnut Hill rezoning, if we could hold those until those public hearings do come up on the agenda. So right now, if you have any general public comments, if you could please step forward to the podium, state your name and address, and if you would, please leave your or restrict your comments to three minutes. We would appreciate it. So right now, we'll open up the general public comment period. There are none. I'll ask Mr. Dines, do we have anybody online? Anybody can speak? Yes, sir. But we just ask if you. Okay, well, if is it about the is about the Walnut Hill or the okay, well, we'll we'll get to that in a few minutes. Or so right now, this is general public comment period. If we don't have anybody in the audience, we'll go to Mr. Dines. Do you have any questions online, sir?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. At that point, we will move on to our next item of business, which is approval of the minutes of the 8 August 2023 King George County Planning Commission. I'll ask the members, if they could, please go through the pages as they will, and if you find any irregularities or corrections, please note those, and we'll cite those in the record.
I'd like to bring up on page 50 on the discussion of the training facility, beginning on page 50, all instances of the word Marshall should be spelled M A R T I A L.
All right. Any other comments? All right. If there are no other comments, we will move on to our next item. We'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the oh, wait, proof. All right. Motion's been made, seconded, or anybody's seconded. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor. Opposed or abstentions?
Extinction.
Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Next item on the agenda is a plan review, which we do not have any this evening, which brings us to the first public hearing of the evening, case number 23-07-Z03, Amendment to the King George County zoning ordinance to define and allow training facilities in the limited agricultural district A1 as a use permitted only by special exception, amendment to sections 1.9 and 2.3.3. Mr. Stewart, please, the floor is yours to present staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Members of the commission, it's nice to go first for a change.
There you go.
Until the end.
And and a less politically charged one, I would.
So tonight, I'll be presenting case number 2307Z03. I promise I will keep this brief as we have several hearings on the agenda. So this case is an amendment to the King George County zoning ordinance to allow and define training facilities in the limited agricultural district that's A1 as a use permitted only by special exception with proposed amendments to section 1.9 definitions of terms and 2.3.3 A1 uses permitted only by special exception. Back on June 6, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to amend the ordinance to expand the definition of a private school to facilitate an educational use that would involve safety, security, and survivability training to avoid and mitigate risks. This use would not be currently permitted under this ordinance. Following the board's direction and upon reviewing similar terms proposed in the draft ordinance overhaul, it was suggested that a separate definition rather than an expansion of the current definition might be more appropriate to facilitate the specialized training use. Additionally, we need to consider accessory uses that are not currently permitted in the ordinance. These can be addressed in the definition, like defensive driving tracks or the discharge of firearms. The first proposed amendment will be to section 1.9 definitions of terms to define a training facility as an establishment which primarily provides safety, security, or survivability training for the purpose of educating students to obtain or maintain a public safety, private security, or high-threat civil or foreign service vocation. This definition shall be construed as being inclusive of all buildings, structures, grounds, and uses that are associated with the organization of the training facility, including but not limited to administrative buildings, cafeterias, classrooms, dormitories, staff housing, storage buildings, and accessory uses such as driving tracks, handgun ranges, and other similarly used structures. The second proposed amendment will be in section 2.3.3. Those are the A1 uses permitted only by special exception to allow train facility as a use permitted only by special exception. And with that, we can end on the recommendation from the Department of Community Development Staff to the Planning Commission to forward case number 2307Z03, amendment to the King George County zoning ordinance to allow and define training facilities in the limited agricultural district A1 as a use permitted only by special exception to the King George County Board of Supervisors with the recommendation of approval. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
No A2. There's no discussion of A2 from the board?
No, sir. I think the intent was the larger parcel size of A1.
And to piggyback on that, what about industrial? Is it an appropriate use there, do you think?
That would be up to the commission and the board. What was requested from their June 6 meeting was just in the limited agricultural district.
Does this include animal use in housing, animal care services, working dogs, medical training, animals? Is I think that should be addressed in the ordinance, too.
I think it would be if it is accessory to the training facility as itself, as it's written. So this is a special exception. That would be the applicant's case to make to you.
Thank you.
Sir.
One question on on public announcements for the special exception. How detailed is the public the public notice? I mean, would it cover? Would does the public notice go into any detail as to what sort of uses are being contemplated for the special exception use?
So the public notice for the special exception would be similar to our normal meeting notices, the ones maybe you've seen in the paper the last two Tuesdays for this meeting in particular. We do also advertise that all of the plans in its entirety are available at our at our office between the hours of 8 a.m. to 4 p.m., and they are welcome to come by and look at them.
The reason I'm asking is because if we're just going to call it a train training facility, that's a very, very broad term. I wonder if the public notice would indicate whether there was firearms training or vehicle training also. Would that be in the in the notice?
When the time came, if it is the desire of the commission, we certainly could include that as part of the advertisement.
Do you think a size restriction, a maximum or a minimum should be considered in the definition?
Again, that is entirely up to the commissioners. The minimum lot size is 10 acres. If you feel that that is not enough, you certainly could include something towards that or make a recommendation that, you know, as presented with the acreage increase.
Thoughts on that or discussion? We can come back to it if you'd like me to open up public hearing. We can come back, chat about it a little bit more.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Mr. Stewart, thank you, sir. Don't go anywhere yet. We may have more questions. All right. This time, we're going to open the floor for public comment. Again, this is just on the training facility that we have in front of us. We'll ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. State your name and address, and I will read from the list of folks who've signed up initially for this, and I have Sheriff Dallas.
Good evening, Vice Chair and members of the commission. My name is Chris Giles, and I live at 9004 Claire Street, King George. I'm speaking at this public hearing in favor of the text amendment. In this amendment, if this amendment is approved, this will open up many doors for training for my office. As it stands right now, most of the training we conduct is outside of the county. This costs my deputies travel time back and forth to the training, not to mention the wear and tear on the issued vehicles. The safety training facility that is requesting this amendment can support some of the training that would require us to leave the county. For instance, the qualifying range we use is a private is private in King George County. This range is nearing the end of life due to the homeowner getting up in the years. When the end of life comes for us to use his range, we will have to seek a range someplace else, most likely outside of the county. We may even have to rent a range in order to be able to qualify on our annual qualifications. This safety training facility has agreed to allow us to use the facility if there is no scheduling conflicts with the safety training they are proposing. The safety training facility will provide us with an area for driver training, classrooms for classroom training, as well as a much-needed qualifying range, which we will need in the very near future. So I'm asking you to vote in favor of amending the zoning ordinance sections 1.9 and 2.3.3 to allow the defining training facility in a limited agricultural district A-1 as a use permit only by special exceptions. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff. All right. I don't have anybody else on the sign up sheet, but anybody else that's interested in speaking, please come forward and love to hear what you'd have to say or comments or thoughts a bit about this proposed change. And if there's nobody in the audience, I'll defer back to Mr. Dines. Do we have anybody on line that'd like to speak to this, sir?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Is there any written comments that have been asked to be read into the record? Okay. Um, at this point, we will close the public comment period on this on this particular issue and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Any additional thoughts? I think as long as it's special exception, we'll have the opportunity to review Mr. Decord's concern about lot sizes, as long as it's conforming lot and A1 will have a opportunity to address it at time of special exception hearing.
I would agree with all of that. I don't have an issue with, you know, setting aside a special definition. It's just, can we do something a little bit more specific than just simply training? Facility. I mean, they say in the opening line, safety, security, and survivability training. I don't have a problem with a title that long, but I don't know whether the kind of training somebody might want to do outdoors, or this doesn't even specify that it's outdoors. It just so could we get just a little bit of a different title on it? And other than that, I don't have any problems with it.
Okay. Self-defense training, maybe?
Survivability training. How about that?
Noise is an issue along those lines, right?
Pardon?
Noise could be an issue along those lines.
It could be, but since it's going to be approval by exception, we'll have an opportunity to see what's around one, you know, all those kinds of things, and make sure that it's going to meet our noise ordinance.
Exactly. I'm just thinking special exception, subject to compliance with the noise ordinance.
Absolutely. But like I said, since one of any of these come before us, we're going to have the opportunity to take a look at it that way. So I just don't like the title. It seems way too broad.
That was my concern, too, about what is actually in the public notice, what's going to alert the public as to what this really is.
Yeah, I don't I don't really care what it is. Just generic training facility doesn't causes anybody's, you know, antenna to go up. I just want people to know sort of the general nature of what it is rather than just saying training.
I would agree. You know, my first thought with training is going to be sports training, and this is obviously not anything like that. So just something that defines it a little bit better. But I would also be for expanding this to industrial use as well. Noise is going to be an issue, and and noise fits better in industrial uses. So it just opens the door for either or. I'm not saying to not do A1. I'm just saying to maybe add industrial.
Come on. My my fear on it is if you have a professional group that's training professionals, I don't have an issue with it. I don't know how we would discern between that and a shooting range coming in, much like the shooting range that came up a few years ago, and how we would determine the difference in those. I don't know if it wouldn't even be better also to make it industrial, profit out other uses. I don't know if that changes our view on it, but it would definitely make it different different qualifications to get people in.
Do we have text language on it?
No draft text.
That's true.
Yeah. Mr. Parker, were you looking for the definition?
I was just wondering if we had put any if we had any language that we had already drafted in the upcoming zoning that might that we might be able to either reference or massage to sway the concerns of the Planning Commission or address any of the issues that we may be looking at so we could do it now as opposed to vectoring this out?
Choose noise. It shouldn't. It should not be a special exception to get around the noise, in my view.
So I'm hearing noise, size, specificity of of the actual training, and then potentially which zoning areas we're going to put it in.
Right?
Yeah. This is I'm not I support this. But working through the standards and conditions like we did for the other ordinances, this is just a definition of a permitted use. But we're going to have to expand that. And frankly, I like the industrial and commercial framework a lot more than I do for an A1. Because once you're in A1, you can pretty much you do 100% ground coverage. You could do you do a lot of things you couldn't do and see commercial or industrial zoning. We have fairly close definitions of of schools. And a training is not schooling or of types of schools, like art schools and sports training in our definitions. The fact that it may not meet legal requirement, some other requirement, you know, if that someone filed to do what these folks want to do under, you know, commercial training school, I would have not blinked. But a separate definition is going to require standards and 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 controls that we wouldn't have to write for commercial or industrial. So as we sit here and talk about this a little bit, I also want to make sure that this doesn't turn out to be a workaround kind of a thing for like a gun range, that it's operated as a professional kind of a business, as opposed to somebody who just decides to go out and do a dirt track and throw up a gun range and say it's a training facility, and you can come in and train yourself. I'd like to stay away from that. So.
So since we're coming through the new zoning and planning ordinances, can we get some draft language on this that we can maybe revisit at the next meeting? And then?
We can. We may. So Virginia Code section 15.2-2285 gives the Planning Commission 100 days since it's recommended from the Board of Supervisors. Your first meeting after then would have been the 13th. That would mean the 100-day timeframe would end, I believe, the 21st, and we would not. We've already missed those advertisement deadlines for that. That would be next week. So you certainly could include all of this in your recommendation. But if nothing is decided on tonight, it would be forwarded to the board as a recommendation of approval.
Where did the 90 days go?
100 days.
Yeah, 100-day limit, but we're just hearing about this. So where did the 90 days that we had go?
The 100 days starts from your first meeting after it was requested from the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Kendrick, so it was.
Something we were handed.
This was brought before you at your last meeting where you voted unanimously to schedule a public.
We were handed a one-page site plan of a general development plan for a facility. I was not understanding that anything. Maybe I missed something. I don't forget.
For reference, the conceptual site plan that was provided to you was just in conception. So this is not a permitted use now. This would only affect future applicants if this was.
No, I'm talking about the 100-day limit from the time the Board of Supervisors asked us to do something. As far as I'm concerned, the first time, like I said, maybe I missed the meeting or something. But the first time I've been asked to look at it is tonight, and you're telling me my 100-day runs out next week. So where did the other 90-some days go?
So before we could schedule the public hearing, we had to get a motion from the Planning Commission to schedule that public hearing. That item was first on the agenda during the public hearings for the Birchwood rezoning and special exception, and the commission decided to adjourn before getting to that item. Then it was on the next agenda, which was last month, where the commission voted to hold a public hearing, and that brings us to tonight.
So we so because we hit the witching hour of midnight and decided to go home, we didn't our clock didn't stop ticking, huh? All right.
We could approve the definition, but that still leaves open the rest of the.
Definition and ask them to send it back.
That's true.
I mean, we can throw something together tonight. It's not exactly the best way to go about this. But if if we did something like professional safety, security, and survivability training, and then we threw in a couple of other comments into the proposed definition that we have here, we can come back later and adjust it. But at least if if we make it a little bit more specific, and I think the wording in it is okay for the most part, but I want to make sure it's it's run as a business, not as a recreational facility. And I could almost buy into it if we could just do that.
Right.
We're just with that right now.
Yeah. Okay. So so we're talking about we got that. We captured that. Do we want to capture a size limit on this acreage or minimum, maximum, anything?
Well, it's in an area that requires 10 acres. So.
The minimum 10.
And which in the event. Comply with the existing noise ordinance.
If I may clarify, just because it's by special exception doesn't mean it's a workaround from any other provision in the zoning ordinance. It's just more of an intensive use that wouldn't be best put as a by right use. So it would have to come before you, not just administratively.
Suppose the training involves traffic control noises, the beeping backing up of trucks, something, the beeping, and the neighbors don't want to hear that noise. Are you saying that the noise ordinance would prohibit that? Or they could go ahead with that?
I can't speak to the specifics of our current zoning noise ordinance, but it would have to follow that.
Decibel levels at the perimeter of the property.
Then it would have to follow that. Yes, sir.
But if you're in A1, you're you're subject to, from the zoning perspective, you're subject. Am I correct, Counselor? Where the noise, you know, noxious noise from an agricultural area is not treated the same as it is in industrial?
Yeah, that's true. We don't. We don't.
So there are some distinctions between industrial noise and other types of noise in terms of the how they can be, you know, how they can be enforced. But I'm not aware offhand of any anything that would make it particularly difficult to enforce the noise ordinance as to agricultural properties that are used for this type of use.
And many other, I mean, not that noise is going to be a concern, and and one of the conditions should be if there are firearms training, it must be dumped in the hours of eight and eight or something, some sort of necking it down.
Well, I I would say that I while I agree with you, when a special exception comes before us, we can work those kinds of issues with the operator at that time. I mean, I I think obviously the noise ordinance will govern it. But if we really want to do something more limited, we can negotiate that with the applicant at that time. We can just simply say you're not getting your special.
Then it's a vested right. Then anyone after that.
Special exception is what we said, that it it it's only approved by special exception. And the most that we would have to do is then turn around and write some guidelines on what would rule a special exception, and we're not being asked to do that tonight.
Mr. Kendrick is correct. You can impose certain restrictions on special exceptions when they're brought before you.
And do those survive ownership?
It would run with the property. Yes, sir.
It's my understanding that by doing special exception, it gives somebody the opportunity to present to us why it is a good
Right.
product for that land. And so I think we do want to keep that opportunity available. But these facilities are very noisy, and the screeching tires. I used to work next to one in Fredericksburg. You can hear him quite quite far away.
That's right.
Yeah, I've had many happy hours in this sort of environment, and it it's necessary, useful, important, and and supports the mission of what we do. My concern of if it were industrial, we'd have controls that we don't have in A1 for anything we may miss in in discussion. And now a single applicant.
To the data center.
We get it right, we nail it, but successor entities to that. And we have schools in commercial and industrial for a reason. We don't have schools in agriculture. Maybe we have a riding school, but you know, equestrian stuff.
Well, that's the reason why I want to be a little bit more specific about what we're talking here. We're not talking about a horse arena. We're talking about, you know, an industrial ways where you're practicing high-speed turns and chases and gun range and all kinds of things that are noise producers. And as long as, and like I said, I don't want somebody turning around and using us to say, oh, I'm I'm going to develop my property this way and give me an exception. I want it done as a professional business. And I don't, you know, I think it's a waste of industrial land to put something like this and use up this many acres for something. But.
It was industrial. It's an old pit.
Here, whether it's an industrial or not, it's just as long as it's by exception, this board gets to take a hard look at it at the time an applicant brings it to us.
Could I ask a question of the county attorney? Does the Board of Supervisors have the authority to waive comply waive an ordinance, or let's, for example, the noise ordinance in conjunction with making a special exception?
The question was whether they can waive the noise ordinance?
Correct. Can they? Can they say that the activities you want to do are by special exception permitted, even though they're going to produce more noise than the noise ordinance would otherwise allow?
No. So currently, the noise ordinance provision is not in the zoning code. It's in the regular provisions of the county ordinance. There are a few exceptions to it, but there would not be a there could not be a blanket exception for. for something otherwise permitted in the zoning ordinance.
So the board of supervisors cannot do that, in your view?
They could not do it on a case by case basis, no.
I see. Thank you. That's helpful.
Well, if we go this, with this definition, I, I would say firearms rather than handgun, or, or say handguns, long guns, shotguns. And, and then I would hope indoors. Have your weapons? I mean, we're going to use, we're going to use, you know, air to ground stuff? I mean, I mean, maybe we should, but aviation?
Mr. Stewart, what, what is our, I don't know that we're going to come through this from a consensus with language this evening. What are our options as we go back to, since we're coming through the current zoning text updates? What, what can we do as far as that?
So you would have essentially another crack at this when it came back to the draft zoning ordinance. So as of right now, it is not in there. If it is adopted by the board, we would send it to the Berkeley group if it was your consensus.
And then, then we could work the language with the Berkeley group, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Turn it down to work the language of Berkeley group?
Yeah, or, yeah, we could do that. Send it back to them.
Just turn it down with the option of working it with the Berkeley group.
I would like to say, although I think we really do support this in theory, we want a little bit more time to hone in on the details. I would make a motion that we do not recommend that the board of supervisors adopt this ordinance and definition at this time.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor.
To work on it with the Berkeley group.
Right.
I put that language in.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Further.
With the-
Which would happen anyway.
With the, with the intent to modify and clarify it in the future.
Or we could vote for, for, you know, agreeing to take up this definition in ordinance language with ordinance development process already underway. It's not way to it, but-
I, I think because of the time limit, we either say yes or we say no. That's my understanding. That's what I'm understanding, that if, that we can't say defer.
No, without further development.
Ask her around yours.
I would also just say that as far as saying, or mentioning the Berkeley group or the current zoning overhaul, I would recommend not including that exact language, just because we don't want to be tied to strictly that. Once the new ordinance is adopted, it is ours to amend as we please, so it can certainly be done later. I also don't want to get caught in a way that the Berkeley group would consider looking into this as another extension of our timeline.
Would you be willing to change your motion to include the words as written? Deny as written?
Well, I don't know exactly what I just said because I didn't write it down.
So we, we know that there's an applicant out there at least thinking about this because we've seen, we were given a heads up, all right? Can I, can I just suggest, just to get through tonight, that we just change the title to a safety, security or survivability training facility? And then in the first line, go a professionally operated establishment, which, and then just keep the rest of the verbiage on this. And we know that before we pass the revised ordinance, we'll get another shot at it.
So would that mean passing the definition but not voting on the zoning?
Well, it's, the zoning is not before us tonight. This is just the definition and putting it in as a, it's just putting a definition in here.
Right.
And if we, if we leave it as, you know, agricultural, what is it, one? Then again, we come back in the next month or two when we're finalizing the zone, the zoning ordinance rewrite, and we adjust it again there to include whatever we want in it in terms of the areas that it is included in as well as any changes we want to make to the definition.
I agree. I think we should wait for someone who wants to put it in an industrial district. Let them push, push it forward rather than us doing it now. It works in A1, it'll work in industrial. We should wait for an applicant to tell us they need it.
It's the difference between whether you put it in A1 or you rezone to industrial, thereby changing tax structure, which would thereby make different applicants that would be willing to do it.
Yeah, very much.
You're holding out for a, no A1 industrial only?
Our instructions-
That would make sense.
Go ahead.
Instructions from the board say make a definition and put it in A1.
So we, we've got heartburn over which zones to put it in. I don't think we've still come through, we've got a minimum size. We don't know the maximum size. We've got noise issues, and we're still kind of coming through the definition.
There, there's a lot of issues.
So that said, we want to revisit the motion. Mr. Myers, what was your, you had a thought?
I, I do look, and it's not clear in there, but they may only be asking for handgun ranges, which is different. Looking at the, looking at the definition.
The idea was a less intensive use.
Is it handgun ranges only?
Yes, sir.
Is it indoor specifically or?
I can't answer any specifics because this is not a-
Or indoor, one.
I mean, that, an indoor range would scratch the itch about noise on that one, but we're still talking about, you know, motor vehicle training and that such, so. Right, it's not going to be by right. That's true. I mean, we could always vote it at the time. I don't know.
So again, with the thought that if we have a definition and we have a proposed zoning, it opens the door for people to come to us and say, this is our plan. Do you like it? And then we say, we like some of it, or we like all of it, or we like none of it. That's what special exception does for us. You know, I think we all like this idea. If we need to tweak the, the title and recommend that maybe we could recommend back to the board that it would be for, good for industrial as well, you know? And then they can take it as it is, or, you know, and if we did, we did approve this, couldn't we still tweak it before the next draft gets released?
I think the issue is we've got two or three members who are saying industrial only. And I'd like to remind them that agricultural isn't necessarily a quiet bucolic use either. I mean, hmm? Is it? I thought you were lobbying for industrial only.
I think that any training facility application that desires to locate in King George County either find an industrial site or find an A1 site that they want to rezone as industrial. And we have a lot of this marginal land zoned A1 in the gravel pits, and of which this is one. That was formerly, I would rather, you know, make those a, you know, industrial than take some anymore. We just gave away 600 acres.
I think my response with that, to that would be I don't want to push for more industrial zonings in the county.
Where, do you know, is there somewhere this is going to be?
Yeah.
We missed a, we got a, it's on the rapid hand.
Proposed as on the rapid hand.
And we can't shape a definition for a specific client. It's probably brushing up against the legal or specific applicant restriction as well. But either, you know, rezone A1 into-
I'm not sure that, I, I have some concern about adopting a, a policy that encourages rezoning A1 to industri- If it's industrial already, okay, fine.
It's industrial use. It's not. Excuse me? It is.
I don't think this is an industrial use.
Well, a commercial use. Non-agricultural, commercial use.
That's true.
Or other than agricultural use. Remember, we just gave away, we just rezoned a lot of King George agricultural land for other purposes.
And for that reason, I would like to put an additional, or as much specificity as we can into it, because our recommendations aren't always taken into consideration. So.
If this is the right place to run, right, I'm all in. I just don't know how we would zone a racetrack in a shooting range.
Again, I would say it's, it's not up to us. If it's special exception, it's up to them to provide us with a plan that would work.
So, so we're sure that, we're sure that because that one night that we hit the witching hour and called it a night at midnight, didn't, didn't, didn't vote on it, that's when our clock started? It was midnight, man. It was late. I can't think of nothing at that time of night. All right.
So again, I guess I'm recommending make a title change. I could even forget about putting in the professionally operated phrase and let it go that way. And we come back and we catch it when we get our next opportunity to take a bite out of this apple. Because if, if we don't do anything, as I understand it, it's basically going to go to the board of supervisors with no action, and it's going to be up to them to either just take this or send it back to us again.
Hmm?
And I'm going off of-
If you don't make any action on it, it will be deemed approved in the board's eyes. But you certainly could make a recommendation with some of the, like, definition change or title change. Just include that in your recommendation, and they would have that for their consideration.
Does the, I know the applicants are here, and this is, potential future applicants may be here, but is there a credentialing body or agency, or the ISO standards, or there's third-party professional standard accreditations, certifications that apply to training facilities that may provide like the NFPA does for fire?
That's such a broad, as we've got it written now, that's such a broad definition that I'd almost guarantee you there's nothing out there written specifically for these kind of things. So again, I'm saying I, I like your idea, but if we make a few minor changes tonight, give it back to the board, we get an opportunity when we're finalizing the revised ordinance to have our contractor do that kind of research, and then we capture it then. At or we give it back to the board of supervisors tonight? We already know that there's something out there because we were given that heads up last month. And we have no, no comment to the, to the board of supervisors on what to do with it.
True. All right, folks, we need to. I know.
Okay, I have another, another thought. So if we add the, the wording with the changing of the title, instead of saying, purpose of educating students to obtain or maintain a public safety vocation, could we say the purpose of certifying students? That way you don't have, you know, some person in the county that decides he wants to treat, you know, train people tactically. And he could turn it into, he or she could turn it into a business.
You may have situation where in order to keep your certification, you have to do more hours of training or something that you know.
What I'm saying is make that part of the maintaining a professional training facility, say that it's to certify students. I mean, I'm assuming that when they go through these courses for, you know, whatever agencies that they're working for, that there is some type of documentation that says that they graduate or were certified in whatever it is they're being trained in, rather than having someone, like I said, take their 10 acres, put in a shooting range and a dirt track and have at it because they think they're tactical.
I'm not sure that there's an organization out there that certifies anything. So I could see somebody going online and working up their own little certification, you have been trained. So I mean, I'm not trying to be funny or anything.
No, you're right.
No, I mean, every time we turn around, I'm always surprised that the way people find, weave their way through our rules. So again, I'm back to let's do something that sort of sends a little bit of a message to the board of supervisors, and we'll get another shot at it.
Dormitories is a word I have a little trouble with. This, this, you know, turning us into a residential enterprise, you're going to, I mean, a lot of things you can do in A1 that you can't do in other areas. This is a human habitation thing now. You know, day and night activities or, you know, sure, you know, I'd call it a field training facility and make them all live in field conditions.
So are we for a motion that says we would deny the recommendation of this ordinance until there are more clarifications?
Okay.
Right, deny and the recommendation to pass this ordinance until we can clarify it and better define it. Because I think, you know, we've, we've made the point that we are for this. We just want to define it and have more clarity about it. So if we don't do anything, it's approved. If we're not happy to approve it as is, then I see we would have to deny it. But say that our intent is to modify and clarify it.
They didn't send us, the board of supervisors didn't send us anything saying-
Right.
-approve or disapprove. They sent us direction-
To hold a public hearing.
To hold a public hearing and to put a definition into the ordinance. Staff has given us a first shot at that definition, including which zones it would apply to. So there's nothing to approve or disapprove, in, in my opinion. It's like we either say this looks great, we recommend that it be adopted, or we make a recommended change, but there's no approving or disapproving.
It's denied. I agree. So- And it doesn't prohibit it or preclude it from being drafted in the draft zoning ordinance changes that are coming up, correct? We can still include it in that. We have satisfied the request for a public hearing. We've done that. We've started talking through it and we'll have opportunity to talk to it later. But for right now, I think, I think it sounds like the consensus of this panel is that we don't necessarily want to move it as it is because there's additional levels of specificity. That we want to include in it at such time where we can talk through it in greater detail, correct?
You know, saying like Gary said is um, there's no approval, disapproval of this definition or any given definition other than hold a hearing on a definition. Uh, or changing, hold a hearing on making this change, which we, we satisfied. And we can say some, something happy like we look for, we rec- we recommend to the board of supervisors that this be. This new definition be included in the ordinance review, the current ordinance review. Process. There's no really approval or disapproval internally.
So it sounds like we've been percolating this rascal for a while. Let's uh, see if anybody wanna take a stab at a, at a motion? Okay.
Wait until the next.
Case number twenty-three zero seven zero three. We make a recommendation that the board not amend section one point nine and two point three three. And wait to handle this in our current zoning overhaul.
Motion's been made.
I'll second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Put it up for a vote. All in favor. Two, three, four. Motion passes. Well, did not, who is not in favor? Motion passes four to three.
Mr. Pancotti.
Good recommendation of the not.
Could, could that language be circulated to the planning commission again if it's?
This language?
I'd like to get it electronically.
It should be, um, should have gotten sent to you at the board with the packet for the. Are you asking for what was just voted on?
Yeah, I'd like to get that electronically. I'm not sure. If you throw you something, that's fine.
I can resend it to you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, that brings us to our next public hearing of the evening. Case number twenty-two dash zero two dash Z zero one, rezoning request by Walnut Hill Development Corporation and NVR Incorporated owners to rezone with proffers tax map nine ten. Parcels one through forty-two, A, B, and C portions from A two rural agricultural district to R three multifamily dwelling district combined acreage is approximately one hundred and twenty-two point nine nine. The acreage is to be rezoned and approximately, um, the acreage to be rezoned, excuse me, is approximately forty-six point three six. Remaining A two portion of tax map nine dash ten dash C will be subject to the proposed proffers. The proposal includes twenty-five detached single family dwelling units and seventy-five attached town home units. All lots will be served by public water and sewer. The minimum lot size in the A two zoning district is two acres. Minimum lot, lot size for lots served by public water and sewer in the R three zoning district is fifteen thousand square feet and a minimum lot size for town homes is fifteen hundred square feet. Rezoning request includes the following. One, request to rezone, request that the planning commission not require more than one entrance per section eight dot three dot one B of the subdivision ordinance. Two subdivision ordinance exception request for the, uh, to allow for less than the required number of inter parcel. Constructed connectors per section eight dot three dot one C. Three subdivision ordinance exception request to allow for an increase in the maximum cul-de-sac length per section eight dot three dot five A. All parcels are located within the Dogron settlement area per the King George County Comprehensive Plan of twenty nineteen. And to present, Mr. Louis Pancotti, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the commission. I'm Louis Pancotti and I will be presenting case number twenty-two dash O two dash Z O one. As Mr. Parker just read, I won't bore us all again with this. Um. These uh, parts, these subject parcels are located southwest of the existing Bayberry Estates subdivision. These parcels have limited frontage on Owen Drive and Dogron Road. There is no frontage on Route three oh one there, and they are located in the Dogron primary settlement area. The applicant is seeking to rezone forty-six point three six acres from A two to R three with proffers. The remainder will remain A two. The proposed use will be twenty-five single family dwelling, uh, unit lots and seventy-five attached town home units with ninety-nine point four six acres of open space. All lots will be served by community water and sewer and the applicant proposes one primary access off of Owen's Drive. Per the zoning ordinance, the minimum lot size in the A two zoning district is two acres. Cluster subdivision lots in A two can be reduced to forty thousand square feet. In the proposed R three zoning, the minimum lot size for a single family lot is fifteen thousand square feet. Uh, the minimum lot size for town homes is fifteen hundred square feet with a maximum density of eight dwellings per gross acre. The subject parcels were originally developed as a cluster subdivision of forty-two single family home lots. In two thousand seventeen, a final plat was approved and recorded for the subdivision known as Walnut Hill. Construction plans for the project were also approved in two thousand seventeen. An exception was granted by the board of supervisors on July twenty-first, two thousand fifteen to allow the subdivision to be served by only one entrance. During construction of the subdivision, it was discovered that the construction of the stormwater management facilities was not sufficient to support the project. The applicant notes that it had a unsuspectably low water table. The construction of the subdivision was stopped and the stormwater ponds that were constructed were for, forced to be abandoned. It should be noted. Also that in two thousand seven, a separate rezoning request for this property was denied. That application, however, proposed. I think the final count was two hundred and forty dwelling units and some commercial units or commercial uses as well. This slide shows the existing conditions of the lot and the previously approved subdivision. This portion of wild, sorry, of Wildflower Lane here, um, will not be constructed as part of the new proposal. Dwellings on lot, on the proposed lots one and lot seventeen have already been constructed. That would be this lot and this lot. The new development will mostly follow the road network. Here else, so we can look at it. Will, um, mostly follow the road network that was approved as part of the cluster subdivision. All lots will be served by internal roads, Hazelnut Lane and Wildflower Way. The GDP defict depicts an open lawn for recreational use, a pavilion, a walking trail and stormwater management facilities within the open space. The applicant is only seeking to rezone forty-six point three six. Acres of the one hundred and twenty-two point nine nine acres. The remainder will stay A two. The proper state that the A two portion will remain open space and cannot be subdivided. In addition, uh, to the two offs. Off street parking spaces for each dwelling, thirty-two on-street parking spaces will be provided. And an eight-space parking lot will also be provided for trail use and overflow. A secondary gated access is provided off Dogron Road and that will be for emergency vehicles. And then this, uh, shows the entire parcels that are subject to this rezoning. Uh, this large area is the portion that is remaining A two and will be open space. The applicant has offered proffers that will place conditions on the property and the development as a whole. These include the following. Uh, the property will be developed in conformance with the generalized development plan. The use will be limited to twenty-five single family, uh, detached units and seventy-five residential town home units. The applicant agrees to construct a nature trail of one thousand three hundred and eighty feet and a picnic pavilion. The applicant agrees to maintain Peter Lane until such time that is, is constructed to meet VDOT standards. And water and sewer infrastructure will be designed and constructed to service authority standards. The applicant will also pay seven hundred. Eighty-three point. Or in ninety or fifty-nine cents, uh, per dwelling unit to offset the impact this. Project will have on fire and rescue services based on the submitted fiscal impact analysis. The applicant will also agree to pay six hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents per dwelling unit to offset the impacts that the project will have on parks and recreation services. Based on that fiscal impact analysis. The applicant claims responsibility for providing purchasers notice that the properties are within the noise zone of the naval base. And the applicant agrees to initiate a program known as Hometown Heroes to provide financial assistance to further affordable housing. By offering a stipend to King George County School employees and King George County government employees. In order to buy homes in the development, the applicant will deposit. Twenty-five thousand dollars in an escrow account for this program and purchasers can receive up to twenty-five hundred per applicable unit. The project will be served by public water and sewer. The applicant and the service authority has entered into a reimbursement agreement in two thousand sixteen where the developer agreed to install. On-site and off-site infrastructure necessary for water and sewer extensions and the service authority agreed to rebate these costs through money collected. Due to connection fees accruing as a result of the connections within the project. This agreement has been modified to reflect the redesign of the project. The revised agreement was approved by the service authority on July eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and the total reimbursement is capped at six hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The applicant has provided an analysis of the fiscal impacts of the development on both water and sewer systems. It concluded that minor upgrades may be needed for the pump station serving the development in the sum of around fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. Although some water and sewer infrastructure has been installed but not used, the applicant will be responsible for meeting all service authority regulations. This could include having to provide sanitary sewer pump, um, station upgrades, water pump station repairs. Water supply pipe spot checking at the county's discretion and retesting of all utilities on the premises prior to acceptance of the facilities. The applicant has also provided a fiscal impact analysis or FIA for the additional fifty-eight dwelling units that will be permitted in addition to the forty-two units already approved by right. This analysis shows that over thirty years after construction commencement, the development will have a positive net, net impact on the county general fund revenues of two million, five hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars. The applicant or the development is projected to result in. Five million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight. Hundred in revenue for the service authority and the, in the temporary construction impacts will be four million, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars in jobs in terms of compensation. According to the FIA. Davenport Public Finance provided a review on behalf of the county and noted that from the standpoint of impact to operating revenues versus expenditures. The analysis produces a modestly, uh, positive to break even result. The applicant responded noting that the FIA does project a positive impact of eighty-four thousand dollars, nine hundred and ninety-nine or dollars annually. As for traffic, the applicant has provided a preliminary traffic analysis. It is estimated that the development will generate seven hundred and forty-two trips per day. The existing forty-two lots have a projection of three hundred and ninety-six trips per, per day. The applicant knows that the development is expected to have a negative, negligible. Impact on the nearest intersection of consequence. Sheriff Giles does note in a letter dated March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three that the project could propose. Could pose a safety issues navigating Owen Drive due to the additional traffic. VDOT has acknowledged that a turn lane is not warranted and the sheriff office has verified that they will enforce the proposed no parking areas along the new public road. As for the environmental impacts, the redesign of the development proposes shrinking the area of the residential lots. Although the subject parcels do may contain wetlands, the preliminary wetland, um, jurisdictional determinations show that no resource protection areas are present. New stormwater facilities will be located in more feasible locations and the existing unfinished ponds will be abandoned and shall remain natural. All stormwater and Chesapeake Bay requirements will have to be met at the time of site plan approval and please note that the approved jurisdictional determination will be required before, uh, site plan approval. For the impacts on public safety, the applicants have, the applicant has provided or proffered a total amount of. Seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and nineteen cents to offset the impact that the additional dwelling units will have on emergency services. Fire and rescue chief David Moody projects that the annual cost for the buy right, annual calls for the buy right. Forty-two dwelling units would be sixteen and that the additional fifty-eight dwellings would generate twenty-three calls. The gated emergency access has been provided for county use. The fiscal impact shows that the projected number of students resulting from the additional fifty-eight, uh, dwelling units. The analysis shows that the rezoning would result in an additional twenty-two students per year in additional, in addition to the projection for the buy right forty-two homes. King George County School Superintendent Dr. Jesse Boyd has stated that King George County Schools believe that there will be a significant impact on the school division. Based on the addition of one hundred houses within the Potomac Elementary, King George Middle and King George High School attendance zones. The applicant responded noting that the capacities. Shown were different than those in the comprehensive plan and that Dr. Boyd's analysis was based on a hundred. Homes rather than solely the fifty-eight new lots, the new proposed lots. Dr. Benson, Dr. Boyd's predecessor, wrote in a comment letter dated April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. That it may be necessary to increase our instructional staffing to accommodate the additional students anticipated with the proposed projects. It is likely that the proposed development would increase school bus ridership and consequently result in costs for additional equipment such as buses and staff such as drivers. Davenport Financial has also noted that to the extent that the proposed development results in the need for expanding school facilities, this is material impact to the financial analysis and should be further evaluated. The applicant responded stating that the cost for additional staff and equipment was included in the FIA and projected revenues will be more than enough to cover those costs. As for the comprehensive plan, the development is located in the Dogron Settlement Area. According to the plan, this is one of the primary locations for future residential development. And community facilities in the county, including the possibility for potential rezoning to more dense residential and mixed-use zoning districts. So as part of the rezoning application, the applicant is also seeking three subdivision ordinance exceptions. Exception one is an exception from the requirements of section eight point three point one B so that the subdivision can be served by one entrance. Exception two is an exception to the required number of constructed inter parcel connections pursuant to section eight point three point one C. And exception three is an exception to the maximum length of a cul-de-sac street per section eight point three point five A. So starting with exception number one, uh, section eight point three point one B states that the maximum number of entrances a subdivision can have. To an existing, uh, primary or secondary road is one. However, the commission may require two for subdivisions with thirty-six to a hundred lots. The applicant is seeking it an exception to this provision so that the lot, so that the. Development can be served by one entrance. The applicant cites limited road frontage. And states that future access to three oh one has been provided through the inter parcel connection, that a gated emergency entrance has been provided for. First responders in case of an emergency and that the Hazelnut Lane entrance has been designed as a divided road. To lessen the chance that ingress or egress could be blocked and the chance of an emergency. As for exception number two, a subdivision with fifty-one to two hundred lots are to provide two inter parcel connections. Where streets are arranged to provide access to adjoining parcel roads. Roads must be extended and constructed to the adjoining parcel line. And must be provided with cul-de-sacs and construction easements suitable for future use as public roads capable of being accepted into the VDOT system. The GDP does provide the two required inter parcel connections. However, the applicant is requesting a waiver that the requirement for one of the connections be constructed in accordance with VDOT standards to the property line. Until a time that it'll be accepted by VDOT when a connection is actually made. Peter Lane was originally planned to serve as access to the common area, the stormwater ponds and three lots of the. Approved cluster subdivision. Under the revised layout, this road will only provide access. Under the revised layout, this road will only provide access to the common area and serve as a future inter parcel connection. The applicant notes that if construction, the road would not be eligible for V dot acceptance and maintenance as it wouldn't serve any homes. And requests to keep the road as a gravel road to be maintained by the HOA until a connection is made. As for exception number three, section eight point three point five A requires that permanent cul-de-sac streets be no longer than six hundred feet in a residentially zoned property. Hazel Nut Lane, as shown on the GDP is about eight hundred and twenty five feet. The applicant states that the road was constructed in accordance with the cul-de-sac length requirement for the agricultural district, which is eighteen hundred feet. The road is already fully constructed and the two existing houses already front on it and it also serves as one of the two inter parcel connections. The board may grant exceptions to the ordinance per section one point nine. This section states that the governing body may grant. An exception to specific requirements of the ordinance when the subdivider can meet the following. A that if constructed or strictly adhered to the specific requirement would cause an undue hardship. B that the hardship is not generally shared by other subdivisions. And C that the granting of such exception will have no substantially adverse effect on the future residents of the proposed division. Nor upon any adjoining property owner of the proposed division. So back to the rezoning request. An increase in density does raise some concerns. The superintendent believes that the development will have a significant impact on staffing, equipment and facilities of the schools. The lack of a second entrance. Could cause increased traffic and content and congestion on Owen Drive as well as raise safety concerns. Additional entrances would provide fire and rescue personnel a means of ingress and egress. Should an entrance be impassable. The applicant has attempted to mitigate this concern by providing an emergency entrance off Dogger Road and by splitting the main entrance. The applicant proposes. To mitigate the staffing and resource concerns for safety by guaranteeing cash proffers based on the fiscal impact analysis. It should be noted that this analysis was conducted by analyzing the additional units that would be permitted by this rezoning, not the. Approved forty two units. Nonetheless, the majority of these concerns were addressed through the proffers and through the design of the overall site. Because the properties are within the Doggeron Primary Settlement area, a rezoning to a higher density is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. The plan specifically states that this is the area where one of the primary locations for the future residential. Development and community facilities in the county, including the possibility for potential rezoning to more dense residential and misuse mixed use districts. From an environmental perspective, the development does shrink the footprint and remove building lots. And ineffective stormwater from low lying areas. The new footprint should result in smaller impact to the environment in terms of clearing and potential impervious surfaces. Approval will allow for the redesign of the stormwater management and the structure that has failed in the past. Protection of the wetlands on the site will be required as prescribed by DEQ and will be evaluated during the site plan phase of the development. The project also provides an opportunity to expand water and sewer services and generate revenue for the service authority. And a need for mixed housing types has been identified in the comprehensive plan. The first housing goal listed on page thirty two states the need to provide a full range of housing choices for all income groups, families, various sizes, seniors and persons. Persons with special challenges. This project proposes seventy five townhome units in addition to twenty five single family dwellings on smaller lots. The proffers require that the applicant provide financial assistance for the aforementioned hometown heroes. NSF Dogren has also expressed a need for more affordable housing and additional housing options in the Dogren area. So for those reasons, the community development staff recommends that the King George County Planning Commission forward case number twenty two dash O two dash E O one to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation. For approval subject to the proffers exclusive of the provisions as to Peter Lane not being constructed to V dot standards. For exception number one, the subject parcels do have limited road frontage and regarding safety concerns, the applicant has provided. Emergency entrance, an emergency entrance and a split entrance. It should be noted as well that the existing subdivision was granted an exception from this requirement. Therefore, the community development staff recommends that the King George County Planning Commission forward. Exception request for an exception to the requirements of section eight point three point one B so that the subdivision can be. Served by one entrance to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation for approval. As for exception number two, the subdivision ordinance does say state that the Board of Supervisors may grant an exception for per article nine. For the required number of access connections where it can be demonstrated topography, floodplain impacts of wetlands or other sensitive environmental features. Make the connection impractical. There do appear to be wetlands where the connection would take place, but the applicant is not seeking an exception for the number of connections itself. But rather the construction of it at this time. Staff does not believe that the. Application of the construction requirement to the applicant would meet the requirements of an exception. Per section one point nine and therefore the Department of Community Development Staff recommends that the planning commission. Forward subdivision exception request for a reduction in the number of constructed inter parcel connections to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation for denial. As for exception number three, the original road was constructed within the maximum length. Of the road in the agricultural district. This rezoning would make the road exceed the maximum length for a cul-de-sac road in. The R three zoning district. The road is is already constructed and because of its length, the cul-de-sac road is unable. Is able to serve as one of the two inter parcel connections. The Department of Community Development Staff recommends that the planning commission forward exception request for an increase in the allowable cul-de-sac length to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation for approval. I would be happy to answer any questions you have for me. The county attorney office has provided some sample motions for you and the applicant is also here to give a presentation.
Any questions for Mr. Pankati right now or we'd like to hear from the applicant?
The applicant.
Okay, I had one question for Mr. Pankati before he goes. On the on that last part on an exception two, if Peter Lane is not constructed. And all these homes get occupancy permits. Is there a bond in place for the completion of Peter Lane in the future and what happens to it if everybody's got an OP already?
It is proffered that it'll be. Constructed to V dot standard once it's. Once it, once a connection will be made. As far as a bond. We bond it to what it's shown on the site plan. So if the exception is granted that it can be structured. As a gravel road right now, that would be the bond we would have on it for the site plan phase. But again, they have proffered that they will construct it to V dot standards once the connection is made.
Okay, they're proper and that's basically just a promise. There's no bond that's going to exist. Down into the future, years and years. In case there is a connection.
Not to construct it to V dot.
I mean, I don't understand who's going to construct, who's going to finish that road and bring it to V dot standards if there is a connection in the future. Is it this developer or is it the adjacent developer, potential developer down the road?
It is to be maintained by the HOA. But I would have to look at the proffers and I'll check.
That's my question. Biggest question is, is what are the specific issues that. Are preventing that second access to be developed, installed. I mean, aside from the V dot. Issue about not serving any homes. There's one home on it.
And I think that is a question for the applicant. As part of my review, I did not see how they establish it as a hardship at this time.
Thank you. Good job.
Right, that's, there's not any other questions for Mr. Pankati. I think we'll go ahead and let the applicant speak to the project. Alright, thank you, Liz. Appreciate it. Alright, this one will turn it over to the applicant for additional detail.
Thank you. So this one will go forward or back?
That one.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. I'm Richard Stewart and I represent the applicant. If I'm competent, I'll try to do this. To get this to a point where you can see it. Mr. Pankati has done an outstanding job presenting this to you all and I'm not gonna tread a bunch of new ground because I suspect that you'll have questions. But the gist of it is this. They were permitted, I think in two thousand seventeen to build forty two. Single family detached homes back in that property encompassed about forty some of the hundred and twenty two acres. And they started that construction. They got those roads built in there. Some of them. Got down in there and started doing stormwater ponds. And they decided they really shouldn't be building down there. And so as a result of that, probably in about twenty nineteen or so, they came twenty nineteen. They actually talked to the community development office. They talked to me about it. And I tried to give them some assistance as an attorney with it and they came up with this brand new plan. And they're trying to keep those units up on the high ground, stay out of that lower area. They're not wetlands. They could build in them and they have the buy right ability to build in them. But they really shouldn't build in and that's the best way I can say it. And it becomes a much better project if they can move those units up high and stay out of that low area. Now, in doing that, they're asking for more units on an economies of scale. Because they're installing all of the sewer lines. They're installing all of the water lines. They're building the roads. It's curbed and gutted in certain areas. They're spending a great deal of money in here and if they can't get enough. To justify that, then they can't. So that's the difference between the forty two. Larger lot, single family detached and now the twenty five. Single family detached versus the seventy five towns. There also is a need in this county. For more affordable housing and and to be fair and to be honest with you all. When I say affordable housing, those townhouses would still be starting probably at three hundred thousand. But in this day and age, that's affordable. Unfortunately, with the way inflation has gone, so. I'm gonna try. If you all don't mind, may I go over here and show you something rather than. The issue about Peter Lane. That's Peter Lane. It's not. It's not an access point. It's an inter parcel connection. And so there's a group of individuals that own a bunch of land right there on three oh one where you see the little nine. And that's ju- just a future connection that could possibly be made. The truth of it again is that they probably shouldn't build a road down through there. And when you get to that dotted line. I think it's right wet and I'm not sure you'll ever see anything going through there. That was one of the exceptions that we asked for. And I just brought it up because you all had questions about it. We will do what you all want us to do. If you want us to build that. Future connection, we'll build that connection. We just thought it was better that we didn't. Because the whole purpose of moving this is to stay out of those, not gonna call them wet lands, wet areas. There are areas they could build in, but they really don't, really shouldn't build in. That shows you the entire property. And so it it used to go on down considerably what would be to the right. They're bringing that all up now and I think that you're going to end up with about a hundred acres of open space out of that total. Hundred and twenty two acres of of property. This shows you the difference between the proximity to Bayberry. Where the project, they're currently allowed to build. So they can build those units in there within a hundred and eighty feet of Bayberry Estates. The new plan, they come back thirteen hundred feet away from Bayberry Estates. And frankly, they listened to the concerns of the people in Bayberry in that regard. They were worried about them coming down that close, didn't necessarily want more houses down that close. To their subdivision and worried about the the land down there. So you see them coming way back away from them. And that just kind of helps put it into perspective with how much open space there's actually going to be. And trying to tighten this thing up and more of a cluster. And Mr. Pankati went over this a little bit, but obviously. This is just going over what this the service authority is gonna. Gonna receive an additional fifty eight connections above what they had by right. About million, one point, one five million. Five, almost five and a half million in residential services for the sewer authority and a new pump station down there. To support the Dalgran Water System at a cost of a million dollars to the applicant. And again, these are things that Mr. Pankati went over, but. This does fill a need in this area and I just would remind the planning commission. That this is the, this is in the primary settlement area and this is where the comp plan says you want these. And I know some people don't like townhomes. Some of us lived in townhomes when we first started and they were very nice and these are not cheap townhomes by any stretch of the imagination. But they are more affordable. But under the zoning ordinance here, you could have eight townhomes to an acre. And the applicants ask actually only asking for two and a half. So it's it's still a low density in what would be a high density project product, correct? Make sure I was right about that.
The maximum density in R three for townhomes is eight units per gross acre.
And we're asking far below that. At that point, unless you all have questions about the exceptions we're asking, we'll yield to any questions. I do have Jay Hicks here who is a principal with Gerald Properties and between the two of us, we will do our best to answer any questions that you all have.
First and foremost, I got the impression that the failure of the BMPs. Was sort of a justification for the rezoning. Is that correct?
I don't know if they, I I honestly don't know and I've walked it and I've been down there. And I actually had DEQ down there, if you want to know the truth, to look at this. On behalf of the applicant, because they wanted to know the truth of it, I don't know if it was construction, water table. All the above, but but what everybody agreed on was that no, there shouldn't be any houses down there.
So that's a justification for the rezoning to increase the density?
Yes, sir. Well, we want to bring it up.
So my question, the following question, I realize you're an attorney. I might not be able to speak to this directly, but if. The BMPs were not sufficient for forty two single family lots, how is how is the BMP situation to be. Served by a hundred. Twenty twenty five, single family and seventy five townhomes. How is that going to be addressed?
You cut the footprint in half and so. You you think about a townhome as being the same size as a single family detached or a single family home with a bigger yard. And they're not. They're much smaller. They have a much smaller footprint. And so when you put in, what does three townhomes equal? I mean, one, I mean, one home equals probably three townhomes, four townhomes in footprint. And so you're disturbing much less and you're able to control your stormwater much better. And maybe another way to answer it is this. You've now got a hundred acres of open space not touched, whereas before it was seventy eight, I think. So you're 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 not disturbing that much more acreage. It is a much smaller footprint. You're better able to control your stormwater that way because you have less volume. Did I answer that?
Alright, any other questions for the applicant right now or not? We'll open up public comment, public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Okay, at this point, we're going to open up the floor for public comment as before. Anybody that wishes to speak, please approach the podium, state your name and address, and if you could. Let me do your comments to three minutes. I'm gonna start with the list. It was a sign up sheet at the door and go down from there and. Of course, anybody else that wants to speak is welcome to do so as well. First name on the list was, I believe it's John Mallon. Alright.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for the board. Let me do peer for you.
Okay, uh, thank you for the board, let me do peer for you, I'll just spend a few moments. For three years, I've been trying to find a house here in King George County to live in. Currently, I'm living at, well, I just purchased a house at forty-seven ten Marion Drive over there by Parks Farm. It took me three years just to find land. I could not find a house, I had a basement. I moved from Omaha, Nebraska, uh, nine years ago, and I found something else. We have tornadoes there, you have tornadoes here too. And the best defense is a basement. So I had to get on higher ground to have a basement. And that was a major requirement, no basement, no house, so I made that point crystal clear to the builder. So the area, Hazel Nut, I've saw it, I drove around, I tried to find the owner and I could not. But I think that people like myself who wanna move here, know a very nice county, I enjoy moving here, that we need to find a place to live. The other thing too, you're on higher ground than Dogrin and likewise Kaluun Beach. Our hurricanes are ferocious now. Did you know Hurricane Florence dumped so much water in North Carolina, one-third of the state was underwater? Did you know that? That was in the Wichita dispatch newspaper, I do read newspapers. So on this higher ground, you more, uh, amped to have a safety area as far as hurricanes coming through or tornadoes. But I just hope the board approves, uh, selling the land, people like myself. Because if it was sellable two, three years ago, I would've purchased it. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Alright. Next on the list is, uh, Karen Jones.
Good evening, thank you for letting us, um, comment publicly. Greetings from the lowlands, um, if they had asked anyone in Bayberry, we could've told you six inches down, you're hitting water. So, um, not sure about that, but my name is Karen Jones. Uh, I'm a wife, a mom, software developer, part-time accountant, church treasurer, and I am proud to call King George County my home. I'm also a refugee from Maryland. My family moved to Bayberry in 2017 to avoid all the things in Maryland that unfortunately we now see happening here. I spent a ridiculous amount of time researching statistics and numbers about this project. And I will admit that as an accountant, looking at the numbers, they look pretty good. Little shaky on the average number of children per home, two-point-nine, I'm not sure how you do that with people, but anyway. Unless there's a bunch of millionaires in the woods somewhere by themselves. But this is the point, the statistical analysis bears out unless you actually live here. Then you get to see firsthand the impact of your population and poorly conceived commercial growth has had and may continue to have on this community. I'm originally from La Plata, my hometown is a blight, and I watched it happen. I watched over and over as the county commissioners put tax revenue and developers' contributions over the outcry of residents and the call for slower, more measured growth. When I was a kid, you know, back when dinosaurs were on the earth, La Plata had a one stoplight at Route Six and Three-O-One. Has small hospital, a few banks, a gas station, Ben Franklin, and a few drugstores. That was about it in nineteen eighty-three. More neighborhoods sprang up and with them, there came the need for more infrastructure. Unfortunately, usually the developers had already built homes and left town before the infrastructure improvements were made. And since the infrastructure appeared okay at the time, the money was siphoned off into the general fund. And eventually, when acuity caught up to the system, there was no money to make the needed repairs. In the meantime, the roads were becoming increasingly crowded, more accidents occurred. And the solution was more stoplights, stoplights, as far as the eye can see. They're not synchronized, no, gridlock. They don't promote a steady flow of traffic, gridlock became the norm. Because you see, when all these people moved to beautiful, bucolic Charles County from the city to escape the hectic lifestyle, they wanted out, or they wanted to add every single bit of those restaurants, yoga studios, coffee shops, they made the lifestyle hectic right back into Charles County. Walnut went first, there's still backroads, you can get around it if you know how, but, uh, it's a nightmare to drive through. Uh, things are too tightly packed and traffic cannot flow. More and more high-density housing brought with it more crime. Not because of the people in the homes, I'm not blaming them, but because more people statistically needs more crime. I read several density studies that concluded saying more tightly packed people are, the more likely they are to steal or fight or kill each other. I was told by Sheriff Steffey last week that they're seeing both an increase of homeless people and an increased number of break-ins for people trying to score to get drugs in Dogrin. Wonder if that's gonna go in the brochure. Also, with the high-density housing, you bring in more people. We require more public services like water, sewer, roads, schools, parks. Same time, you bring in less tax revenue per household because the houses cost less on less property and generate less tax revenue per person. A few years ago, an elderly friend of ours from church was carjacked in the parking lot of the Little Plaid Target. He was forced to drive through an ATM with drugs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Alright, uh, next up, Leslie Shulkey.
Hello, my name is Cheese.
It'll get you.
Sorry, my name is Leslie Shulkey, I live on Walnut Hill, in Walnut Hill. Been there, I grew up there, uh, sixty years. First, fix the zoning issues, was shut down October two thousand nineteen. Zoning issues, fix it. Here, dig, you wanna know why the soil is bad? Construction, diggers, dozers, trenches, gullies in the back, that's why they can't build. Fix it, you need to return this gorgeous farm back to the way it was. Fix it. You still don't have to build on it, but you need to return it. I'm tired of seeing deer coyotes in my yard with broken legs, then having to chain them to a tractor and drag them into the woods because they've died. One of your board supervisors said in two thousand fifteen, the primary goal of the comprehensive plan is to preserve the rural character of our county. If your only option is to view the county from the window of a car, then you've obviously done something wrong in the development of this county. I don't wanna see one hundred homes on this farm. When I grew up, there was nothing wrong with that soil. There were cattle on that farm, very well fertilized, I chased the cows, I tried to ride them. I helped the farmer Harry Burl bail hay. There's nothing wrong with the soil until you took the topsoil off, until you burned the trees. Four months of fires, I got pneumonia, thank you very much, I didn't appreciate it. Four months of burning, four months of ash. Four months of keeping my cat inside because there's ash in the water dish and the food dish. Four months of hearing people from Bayberry saying, why is there ash raining down on our homes, in our cars? Four months of burning, that's why the soil is bad, that's why you have all of these gullies. That's why you can't use this land. There's now a brand-new pond back here that was never there. There was the cow pond and another pond in a creek. There is now a brand-new pond directly behind our house where the hill is falling in. I'd like it fixed before the rest of our hill falls in, before the rest of the land is destroyed. Harry Burl, he was half-Indian, he was half, he's on the Cherokee Indian rolls. He was a steward of the land, a steward of the land. One hundred homes in an area that is zoned agricultural is not being a good steward of the land. You're not taking care of what you have for the future of our children.
Alright, next up, Robbie Jones.
Hello, I'm Robbie Jones, I live in, uh, Bayberry also on Fleming Street. One of the things that was mentioned here was wetlands, but not wetlands. If you look up all of this area that's on the other acreage, there's dozens and dozens of areas that are designated as wetlands, I don't know whether saying they're not. If you look at the Virginia DEQ website, there's links to the, uh, Clean Water Act, uh, protected areas. So there would be permits required, um, if you looked at that, you could see why, when you dig, there's water. I live on the, so Fleming Street that backs that area. My wife lives, was right, it's six inches down if it's been raining and there's water. If hasn't been raining for a few weeks, you might be able to dig eighteen inches down and there's water. So when we moved there, before I kinda re-landscaped around the house, we constantly had flooding. With these construction sites, all of that sediment on the high ground is gonna roll down into Bayberry and down into these wetlands, all of the pollution, all, everything that hits that neighborhood, the asphalt, the tires, the oil, all of that stuff's gonna roll downhill into the wetlands and into our neighborhood. Also, with the exceptions being asked for, I mean, emergency services are concerned, what if there's about high-density houses close together, a fire breaks out, somebody's parked on the street, you can't get fire trucks through, there's, they're asking for less cross-streets, longer courts. That can lead to a lot of issues. And then high-density housing in general, um, we want, we want affordable housing, but putting everything in one area costs more on public services, it costs more per person. And then you get less per person because it does reduce the value of the houses as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next up, Michelle Lewick.
Hello, my name's Michelle Lewick, I live at the end of Fleming Street, I am the last house on Fleming Street. I don't know if you've ever been stuck in your yard, but my neighbor's been stuck in mine trying to get his truck out after it's rained in eighteen inches of mud, because we don't have grass, we have moss. We also have coyotes in our yard. And if you build more houses and take away where those coyotes live, guess where they're going? Right into those hundred houses where those kids are gonna be. One thing I did not hear the developer say is the impact from the electric company. Anyone who lives in Bayberry knows if the power goes out, we are the last to get power again because of our little great substation. We flood every time it rains. Another issue I noticed is there was nothing said about how the traffic is gonna be on 301. Owens Drive and Dalgrin, we all know it's a problem, everybody gets a text about once a week that there's an accident on Owens and Dalgrin. But no one has said how that's gonna be getting out of Bayberry onto 301, getting out of Owens onto 301 with the extra cars. It's already a hazard to try and turn left to go to Walmart. I live one-point-two miles from the Walmart, it takes me fifteen minutes. If it's Sunday, it takes me twenty-five to get across 301. Another issue that was mentioned is the schooling. I don't know if you guys are familiar with multifamily housing, but being from Alaska, I am. You don't get one family moving into a townhouse, you get two. Because it's what they can afford at three hundred thousand. So you're not getting one child per house, you're getting two or three. And if you're lucky, you're only getting two or three. Those kids are gonna start in twenty-twenty-six in kindergarten, second, first grade. If you've ever been a teacher, you know you can't have thirty kindergartners in a class. That school is already overcrowded, they were three above what their max capacity was. You're going to add more children to that school, which means you either need more teachers or need more space. There wasn't enough money in the budget for that. Additionally, the schools are not new. One other thing that was added, um, the Home for Heroes Act, twenty-five thousand is marked away. If each person is getting twenty-five hundred, you're only helping ten people. Uh, another thing that what was a questionable thing is the school fire, um, and police with one entrance and you have a fire at the back of that subdivision, fire trucks coming through. First of all, it's gonna spread like fire through that wild, um, through the multi-housing. Second of all, the fire truck's not gonna be able to get there because people are going to panic, that's what people do. You're gonna have that street clogged and everybody trying to figure out what they're doing and how to get out safely and get all their stuff, because people don't leave their stuff. I moved to King George because you didn't have multifamily housing, and I'm very sad to see this considered. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, uh, I think, I'm sorry, can't read the last name, I believe it's Chris Palmer? That's okay. That's alright, we got you.
So I've been a Bayberry resident for about five years, love the neighborhood. Um, so in twenty-fourteen, we had the rezoning again, I thought that was kinda odd. Didn't live there, moved in in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, this happened again. I thought that we were done with this, but apparently not. So to speak to some of the applicant's points, that area is indeed to the, to the right of the lot is indeed protected wetlands, it shows on the county's website. So that's, that's all fine and good. Um, personally, I would hope to see that wetland, no, not eventually connect to 301. My idea for that was to eventually have it as part of a land grant. Stafford County does that with, um, actually several of their properties near major subdivisions, it's kinda neat. And also, actually Karen pointed this out to me in an online conversation regarding the service authority. There was a meeting on April twenty-third of this year, when asked about the connection for the water and sewer to that subdivision. I thought it was rather odd that one of the comments made was, we'll figure it out later. Um, and I haven't really seen any progress on that, I guess is the best way to put it. So I think further clarification is gonna be needed. Um, and to touch on one last subject, so there was a traffic study that was cited in, from twenty-twenty-one. That was peak COVID practically, so traffic was low. So, um, that's not an accurate traffic, traffic statistic in the, in, in the least. And considering that traffic did pick up after that point. And also, has the base been, you know, contacted and considered regarding this? Because with the one entrance, you're gonna have two ways, you know, in or out. People are gonna make the left either onto Owens Drive to go onto Doggin Road, that left turn is hazardous. Or if people are gonna be coming from the daycare on the other side to either come across or make a left. Also, it, it's, it's not a, or actually, they're gonna try and make the turn to go towards the B-gate. And B-gate is, um, it's, it's laughably bad on starting Tuesday mornings. So, um, an idea that I did have, VDOT does have incentives for, for example, installing traffic circles or roundabouts, that would probably be an excellent use case for Row, for Owens Drive. And I would highly suggest exploring that as an avenue. So, um, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next up, Deb Hill.
Hi, my name is Deborah Hill, um, this November, my husband and I will be here, or our family will be here, twenty-nine years on Willow Tree Lane in King George in, um, Bayberry. A lot of my points were made, but I did want to, uh, say that I'm right there, I will be affected, I'm right on the edge. And when it does rain hard, and I've got a feeling the weather's gonna get worse, um, yeah, we do flood out. Uh, another thing I was a little concerned about was the number of, uh, students that they're calling for. And twenty-two is rather little, um, for that many houses. I don't see where there's going to be a lot of people that are going to be older that wanna live in a townhouse. Because generally, among them, we're looking for one floor, not multiple floors. The other thing I'm concerned about is if they're not, they're not doing this, the company, I'm not saying they're bad, it's just that they're not doing this except for money. I mean, they want to make money so they can live here, whatever, make their money, move on. But the concern I have is that, uh, what someone very eloquently put, that, you know, they're not going to be stewards of the land. Um, right now, we live on the edge. When, when we first moved in, we saw lots of deer, we saw lots of wonderful animals, they used to come through the streets. And it was wonderful, you know, um, the more traffic, when they put in the Walmart, built all the other stores, yes, I didn't go to the meeting for that one. You know, we're, we're starting to get very busy there. Um, unfortunately, you've got the military base and they're coming up B-gate, so you're got, you get overwhelmed on 301, uh, during summer months, all the way from May until September, you've got the traffic going south on Fridays and coming north on Sundays. Because everybody in Maryland and DC wants to go down to the Carolinas. And then they're coming back on the other way. Traffic is getting bad. Also, uh, if you look at when they had to put in the extra lane to turn into B-gate because the traffic was so heavy coming up that way, there's approximately five thousand people that work on that base. Now, they do not live in this area, they, a lot of them live closer to Fredericksburg, perhaps even Stafford, some south, all the way down to Richmond. Um, a lot of them, it's because they're contractors, this is not a strictly military base, if you're in the area, you know that. This is a contractor base, they've got military there for training. Um, but most of the contractors come up, which is how we ended up here. It's because my husband's retired military, he works for contractor. There's a lot of businesses that were not here that are here now. It's it's beneficial. But I could also say I do not trust that the water, the infrastructure will be able to handle what they're throwing at because just taking it. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Randy Ross.
Hi, my name's Randy Ross. I live in Bayberry on Willow Tree Lane. And I have looked through a number of their reports and stuff. I have some issues with some of the numbers, like today, three hundred thousand for a townhome. Made the assumption that Ryan Homes would be probably the builder. They own the house that's up on the corner. It's built and vacant. All their townhomes have to have, as they propose it, a garage on the first floor. That's the only way they're parking in this area. One in the garage, one on the driveway. All the Ryan home townhomes start at three sixty with a garage. So and they go up to almost four hundred. So is that affordable housing? I think that's a little bit out of the affordable housing range. One of the other issues is I saw one of the engineer reports on when they were trying to do the water, the gallons per day for homes. They reduced the the number of bathrooms to a three bathroom. I don't know what they calculated at first, but they went from a three bedroom, one and a half bathroom to make it conform to the current code for King George County. There are no one and a half baths in these townhomes. They're all two and a half baths. So more water demand on on the system that seems to be not related to King George. There also, the the report was mentioned about the the traffic. Well, we have a lot of traffic. Their report said it was gonna be minimal traffic disruption to the area. Well, go out there on a Saturday and we can't get out of Bayberry. Make a right and go down to the Wawa because it's a parade going down there. If you want to go to Walmart, you're gonna sit at the light at the street sign for five minutes before somebody's lets you across. So we already have problems there. And unfortunately, the state didn't take care of them when the bridge was put in. So we don't need to be adding a lot more people, a lot more cars on the road to to bog down the roads. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Miguel Martinez.
Hello, good evening. I know we've talked about a bunch of points today, but I feel like it's worth reiterating a few things here. During this presentation, one of the things that was brought up was the projected cost to these homes and the townhomes. As was mentioned, those numbers are not entirely transparent. In addition to that, affordable homes in this community, the median income per person in King George is not that high. It's twenty eight K, household is sixty K. You guys can do the math to determine, are these townhomes and new constructions gonna be affordable to the residents in King George? Going further, it's not gonna be a good financial decision for King George because the projection, what was it here? Twenty five thousand for Home Heroes, about seventeen thousand for improvements for the water system. This water system is already taxed. You guys have been here for a little while. You know the millions of dollars in debt and repairs that are gonna be required to be addressed for the current county. How much is gonna happen when you add two hundred additional people? That's not even including kids. All these proposals here is just a bunch of promises without any firm commitments. He's asking for exceptions, but you're not getting any commitments that he's actually gonna be following through on this. I have here three properties that are on three oh one that Jarrell bought, sat on, did not develop, and then he pawned them off on someone else. They couldn't sell them either. You're getting no commitment. They're gonna get built. You're not getting any commitment that you're gonna get any money from this. He's asking for promises from you, but you're not gonna get a dime from him. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, Rose Payne.
Thank you, I'm Rose Payne. Whoops, I'm like you, Leslie. And I live on one five one two three Walnut Lane. I sort of feel that I am being used because I worked with these people in good faith to change my driveway. The only reason it came up was because his new plan that was worked out with Mr. Webb and my son Bill was with me when we discussed this. That that new plan for forty two homes and that's approved. We knew we couldn't fight that because that works. But they were gonna close, totally close Walnut Lane. That has been an access road to my farm for over sixty years. When I mentioned that to Mr. Webb, he knew that that was not gonna go well. So then we talked about maybe changing my driveway. I, in good faith, agreed to this. But I did not agree for a hundred homes. I live in an area that's already congested. We have Dahlgren workers, and I don't blame them, that come from B gate and go down Owens Drive. They come two oh six and go down Owens Drive. When the new bridge was first put in, GPS sent all of those people that didn't want to be in the cluster of the ninety five traffic now on three oh one, sends them all on Owens Drive. One Saturday morning, I couldn't even get out of my driveway. It was bumper to bumper. Try to get off Owens Drive and get onto two oh six when the Dahlgren workers are coming and going. You can sit there ten minutes before you even get off Owens Drive now. When you're talking about putting a hundred buildings, you're not talking just to maybe one car per family. You know of many people that have one car per family. You have more than one drivers. So can you just imagine what the traffic is going to look like? So I think that my good faith working with these people and bad faith, they are using what I gave them to build something entirely different than what I agreed to. My agreement was for forty two homes. The model home is a pretty home. It sits right next to me. And of course, yes, I had erosion problems. They put a fire hydrant out front and they decided to flush that down into my driveway. So I'm not happy about any building going on. But for forty two homes, that's agreeable because that's what the plan allows. But to change this, to give them a right to have a hundred buildings? To me, this is insanity. You are putting more traffic in an already dangerous place. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. All right, next, not 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 hating you because my handwriting is pretty bad too, but I can't really read this. I'm gonna go with the address. Anyone who lives at one five three six seven Fleming Street?
My name's Harry Knight.
There we go.
End of Fleming Street. Kind of sort of the last house. Some of the concerns I want to bring up with, the young lady from Charles County brought up, because I'm a volunteer in Charles County. They are overtaxed on their fire emergency services. One of the comments that was up there, I assume is the the county chief said he's estimating the number of calls that will happen. You don't know until you get the residents there. I'm the EMS chief of the Bell Alton Fire Department, Charles County. We had one resident move into one house in our first due. We run that house seven times a day. I don't know if King George Station Two, which would be the first due company for this development of a hundred houses, can support the manpower if they've got all these people that have serious medical issues to run calls that much. They rely on Dahlgren Navy Base, they're gonna rely on Station One. They also rely on Charles County for for firing EMS services coming here, which is already taxed. I don't think they're gonna have the structure that they can to support a hundred houses with an average of, who knows how many people? Somebody mentioned cars. One person moved into into Bayberry Fleming Street. They've got eight cars in their driveway, just moved in. So there's probably at least a dozen people living in that house. You don't know who's gonna live there, so there's no way of guessing what's gonna happen. Some of the other concerns is the water runoff, okay? It doesn't matter if they're building it up further. You're building up on higher elevation, cut down trees, trees soak up water every day. As we know for the past month, when we get rain, we get rain. Last time this development started, the intersection of Fleming Street and Pemblico was under two and a half feet of water. My ex-wife used to live there. She never had water at her front porch. She had flooding at her front porch. The previous neighbor that bought Michelle's house had to put sump pumps in his house because he was getting flooding and mold. So you cut down trees, you're you're taking away water, it's gonna go somewhere, okay? Then you already got, you know, the sheriff's department's already commented Owens Drive. Dahlgren is ridiculous when it's rush hour time. And I do know for a fact that what the one lady says, if you come from Maryland, it's gonna take you up Owens. And there are times, granted, the bridge is good and bad, it gets more traffic, but we're not having as much backup. But what if there is an accident on the bridge, it's gonna back it up even more. And it's been bumper to bumper all the way up to the sheets on Route Three before when when that bridge has had incidents. And then the wildlife, you know, I think I've seen the same deer with a broken leg go through my backyard. You cut down these trees, these wildlife are gonna go somewhere. They're gonna try to find somewhere to live. They're gonna be out in the roads causing accidents. Because I can tell you right now, my son has hit two deer in Maryland that's not fun. So it's it's a concern as a first responder in a neighboring county. And and as a citizen that lives here, I see a concern with the water flooding in our neighborhood when this happens again. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Travis Yates.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen on the board. My name is Travis Yates. I've lived at one five five one four Fleming Street since two thousand and four. Walnut Hill Corporation, they're about one thing in life, they're about making money. It's not a bad thing, but at whose expense? It's our expense, the community's. When I moved here, that was all zoned agricultural. They took, they went, they bought the property. They've been slowly getting it rezoned to build to make money for themselves. When they bought that land, it's wetlands. Ever since they bought that land and started developing the first half, the flooding has become tenfold. My house never used to flood, now I get water in my house. My neighbors, they get water in their house now. Going back to what they were talking about with the schools. The superintendent of the schools says it's gonna cause an issue epitomic. My two older children, when they attended school there, they were in trailers. Now, my youngest daughter, she's going to school there, there are no trailers. I'd like to keep it that way. They build these houses. I don't know if my child will be in a trailer at a school or my grandchildren will be in a trailer at a school. When it comes to traffic on two oh six, there's accidents there every week. You add an additional hundred houses, there's gonna be more accidents. What they're doing, they're showing all these big numbers of how much money this neighborhood is gonna make the county. They're also doing the Hometown Heroes, twenty five thousand dollars is a drop in a bucket. If that was such a big concern and they were concerned about helping the community, they they could offer that before. They're trying to buy your vote to approve this. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alrighty, Doug Stevens.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Douglas Stevens. I live at one five two nine nine Ballantre Avenue. My property is it situated pretty much at the end of Hazenlet Drive. Going off to the left of Ms. Leslie over here, I have roughly about twelve acres. So I am at the end of your line when it states to where this building development's gonna be. That being said, I will probably be the last person to exit my property in any given day during any given morning when everybody's going out to work. So it's going to be, I think, a catastrophe on my part because I won't be able to leave. I'll be fighting a jam, you know, leaving in the morning and I'll be fighting a jam coming back to work. Should I ever go to work? I've been working from home for roughly around, I'd say, four years now, ever since the COVID. What I will say in conversations with Ms. Payne and Ms. Leslie, they are absolutely right. We do not need a such an expansive invasion of houses on this stretch of land. Forty two, of course, is acceptable. I view my property, of course, as an estate, a legacy property. The foundation's been there since the twenties, okay? And it's been been added on to ever since. So I would consider a legacy property for me. If we build all this land and we cut all these trees down, the animals are gonna come to me. I'll be glad to feed them if you'll be glad to pay for the food. However, I also think that, you know, the the accessibility, we've already discussed the multiple erosion issues. I believe that we need to restore the land to as much to its original state as we can be. You know, and then you move forward with, say, the forty two. If the if you can do that even at all. I do not believe that this is going to be a positive money-making venture going forward. If anything, it will it will serve as a transient community for the people going on and off the Dahlgren base and transferring in and out of Virginia. Therefore, you'll have multiple homes selling, you know, or maybe renting out. But you won't have, I don't think you'll have the incentive to buy so much as rent out townhouses and other properties. I much prefer to see Georgia adopt a a legacy platform in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's everybody that we have on the signup list. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak? Come on up in whatever order you'd see fit.
Hi, my name's David Hager. I live on one five three eight zero Fleming Street, which is at the end of the street. I guess the first thing I want to say is we're not looking at an acceptable situation, making it bad. We're looking at a bad situation that we're gonna make worse. I'm an engineer. I've been studying Bayberry for the twenty years I've lived there. And it's continued to get worse. We've heard other people talking about flooding. The storm runoff system of Bayberry is woefully, woefully underdesigned. The section of Fleming is is a newer section, doesn't have storm runoff pipes, it just has ditches. And all of that runoff goes into the wet area behind our house. When Walnut Hill tried their other development to the south, my neighbor Michelle and my house got flooded because of the runoff from that. I think, I'm not sure if that's why it was stopped or not, but Bayberry can't handle the storm runoff we have already. So any development is gonna make that far worse. I've been working with the county and the state, the twenty years I've been here. Frankly, I'm a little tired of the county pointing at V dot and V dot pointing at the county. You know, we need to fix this situation in Bayberry. And that's outside of any developments that are being proposed because we're we're the flooding is getting worse and it's just gonna keep getting worse. So until we fix Bayberry as it is, we shouldn't even think about new developments. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Hello, my name is Linda Fowler. I live at four two four nine Stafford Lane, and that is in Chatham Village, which has the opening, the egress and regress off of Owens. We've heard a lot tonight, and I'm sorry that this company has made a bad investment as far as where they chose to buy land. But it we should, this, the people of this community should not have to bear the brunt of that bad mistake. The one thing that I would do is ask that the county set out the devices that track the traffic on Owens Drive and do that for a period of time to really get a good idea of how much traffic there is already on that road. And to add seven hundred and forty two trips a day. And to add 742 trips a day just is astronomical. I mean, it's going to really create a problem on that road. One of the other things in their presentation, they said that they could create an HOA to service the roads. Well, you know, to bring it up to code or whatever. To me, that sounds really unrealistic as most of the HOA presidents and things that I know of are not professionals at road construction. The other thing is they talked about how much money that the county would get for different things. But one of them was, you know, on the water, they would get 84,000, well, they did it a whole big number. And I did the math and it came out to $84,666 a year for revenue from water. Yeah, that may be the revenue you bring in, but how much does it cost? I mean, how much does it cost for the infrastructure? How much does it cost for the maintenance of the infrastructure? So I think they threw out a lot of good numbers about what it could do for the county. But I just don't know that we got the balance of what the cost would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Will Lewis, sorry, 1532 Fleming Street. I want to talk about what I know, what I know is education. I taught, this is my 12th year teaching in Charles County. I enjoy teaching there. But, and of those 12 years, 10 of them have been active member of our education association. And all we've done in 10 years is plead with the county commissioners to not build new developments where we don't have seats for kids in the schools. I had this conversation with the county commissioner literally like last Thursday. Please don't approve another development in a place where we don't have a space for these kids to go to school. And I know what developers do, right? When you're projecting how many kids are going to go to school, there's a formula. And you do everything you can to find the lowest possible number that you can legally justify. It is not going to be 22 kids that go to King George County schools. It's not. It's going to be a lot more than that. And because these are more affordable, I'm going to quibble with 300,000 being affordable, but more affordable, it's going to attract younger families. Younger families have younger kids. This is going to disproportionately impact Potomac Elementary. We're going to be sending more kids to Potomac Elementary. I don't know how everyone knows or what you know about education, but hiring new teachers is incredibly difficult right now. So what happens is as new students enroll, we have a legal obligation to give these kids an education, as we should. We just increase class sizes and we have space issues. So this board and the board of supervisors prepared to make the investments that are going to have to happen if we do this into Potomac Elementary and into the school system. Because if we're not, you're going to have overcrowded schools. You're going to have massive class sizes and you're going to have more teachers who are running for the exits. And if more teachers run for the exits, then we have less teachers and bigger classes. And this becomes a circular problem. Growth is inevitable, but we have to be smart about how we grow. Saying that 100 buildings or 100 new homes is going to produce 22 kids, it's not real. It's not realistic. And if we're not willing to make the investment into the public education system to educate the kids that are going to come as a part of this development, then we shouldn't do this. Why do people come and buy in an area? Is it safe and how are the schools? I don't have children myself, but I have a niece and a nephew that go to Potomac Elementary. I have friends who send their kids to Potomac Elementary and other King George County schools. They've had a great experience. I don't want to see that change because we overburden our school system. So if we're going to do this, which I don't think we should, but if we do, we need a commitment from everybody in this county that we're going to properly fund the school systems and we're going to have the teachers that are available, the funds that are available for building expansions. All that's going to have to be done so that we properly account for the students we're going to add. We've made a lot of great points, but I think we really need to focus on we're adding so many more kids to our school system. And are we ready for that? And are we prepared to invest where we're going to have to if we do this project? Thank you.
Good evening. What's your name? My name's Bob Williams. My wife and I own two homes in Bayberry. And my wife and I also have two sun pumps in both of our homes and two sun pumps in our backyards. So there is a problem. But more importantly, I just have one question. How many of you on the board have seen or been to the area that we're talking about? Can I see a show of hands? Joe, I know you have because I met you out there today. Thank you. So nobody, okay, so there's two. I suggest, just out of the blue, let's get out and see what we're talking about.
Good evening, Taylor Courtney. I'm in the Meadows subdivision, which is close to where this is getting built. I just have a couple of comments. I don't think it should get built, first of all, but I have a personal story of driving on Owens. It was right after I started driving, I had my driver's license, I think, at the time. And the road was full of cars coming from Dogren. And I was kind of nervous because I looked back and the car is really close to me. So I hit the back road going into the Meadows pretty fast, which is gravel. And I rolled up the hill a little bit. So that's my first story. I think the Owens Drive is already too congested. It can be too congested at times. I mean, this was 10 years ago now, so it's probably even worse lately. I don't really tell you, but, and then the second thing I have is that the water retention ponds, it sounds like there's some kind of erosion going on. It doesn't sound like anything's happening with those. I think that if they don't have good maintenance with the water retention ponds, they need to cover them back in and put grass over them or something or a tree to keep erosion from happening. And so I have.
My name is Bill Davis, 15216 Hall Road in King George, Virginia. I do not live in Bayberry, but I have lived here my entire life. I'm a King George native. And where Bayberry is, I played on those farms 40 years ago. I've ridden my motorcycle illegally out there, my dirt bike. I was chased at by some and waved at by others because in King George, they expect a dirt bike to cross the road every now and then across their farmland. I built houses in Bayberry when there's hardly any houses in there. I'd come up from college and I'd build in there and hang vinyl siding and things of that nature. So I'm very familiar with the area and very familiar with the people that move into that area. I think, but I think it's very clear for us that, you know, I'm all for growth in King George. I remember in King George, when people here, they move here now, they complain about the fact we don't have food line. Well, man, we used to have Circle Supermarket and Safeway. All right, there were no food lines. We jumped them down from, we had no McDonald's, we had none of those things. We had a Boston Pizza Hut, a Boston House of Pizza where Valero is across from middle school and that was it. And we liked it, but I'm not, I'm for growth. I'm for growth, but I'm for organic growth. I'm not for forced growth. And things like this are forced when you have to keep going back to the people in order to pay for the decisions that you're making as far as tax dollars. And if we think that, and there's people on the board that think that we have to, in order to solve the service authority, we have to keep building. I don't know any business plan where you do that, where you can't, where you don't know how to run a business, but if you keep expanding it, you'll somehow figure it out every time and make more revenue. I think we need to figure out what we're doing with some of the things we have. I also think that organic growth pertains to infrastructure. I think everybody in this room can, from just what, even the slides that were presented, can see that we don't have the infrastructure in place to contain this right now, to build this up. The infrastructure is just not there. I feel sorry for Potomac Elementary School because growing up here, it's always been kind of stepchild of the school system here. I don't know why that is, but it just kind of has been. And the fact that it's already at capacity, we have some things ahead of us, which is if we want growth to come here, we have to first prepare for growth. You don't grow and then start preparing. You're either prepared for life or you're always trying to catch up. And if you're always trying to catch up, you're always behind and your taxes keep going up. And you start losing and hurting and affecting the people that are from this town who have been here for generations and generations. Thanks again.
Thanks, Bill. All right, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Tim Hartnett. I live on Delaware Drive in Bayberry. I've lived there since 1986. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about the traffic. So if the traffic study that you had was from 2021, with the bridge, I think a new traffic study should be done. And it may actually affect your comprehensive plan because you may find that the traffic density is too much to allow for any more growth in the area. You know, we in Bayberry have had the horror of the new bridge stopping us from doing anything quickly anymore. So I suggest that you do a study of traffic now before you add another 100 houses and the traffic that goes with that to the area. That's all I had.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else in the audience? If not, I have two emails that came in, Mr. Ben Cotty, to be read in. Would you like me to read those or? Okay. Okay, first one is from April Bryant Mason. Dear Planning Commission, as a resident of Bayberry subdivision, I have concerns about the rezoning of Walnut Hill. When I purchased my home, I performed due diligence in researching the zoning of surrounding properties. I knew that agricultural areas might not stay agricultural forever, but understood that homes on two of your lots were possible. Will this rezoning support the goals and vision of King George set forth in the comprehensive plan? Traffic analysis presented does not have enough data to make a conclusion. The traffic observation occurred on a single day, March 27. Dogren Naval Base continues to be a hybrid telework in-person protocol, which means a single day traffic analysis may not be representative, excuse me, of regular traffic. Anecdotally, this morning, 12 September 2023, there was an accident on Dowron Road near Owens Drive during the commute time delaying my daughter's bus. I also have concerns regarding additional usage impact on the service authority pumping stations. Is the proposed impeller upgrade sufficient? Will running the pumps near max capacity ultimately shorten its usable life, leaving the service authority customers with yet another costly debt fee? I would appreciate it if the service authority can speak to this. Finally, are there any considerations for school bus capacity? Buses currently run at capacity, including seating elementary students, three to a seat. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, April Bryant Mason, 15369 Delaware Drive. And then there's another one from Brett Maffet. Good afternoon, I wanted to express my opinions on the proposal to rezone the property at Owens Drive and Hazelnut Lane to our three multifamily dwellings. I will not be able to attend the hearing tonight due to being stuck late at the office. My address is 14776 Peachtree Lane, King George, Virginia. I live in the Dowron District, which this proposal will impact. My opinion is as follows. I consider any attempt to rezone this property into multifamily dwelling, specifically the 75 proposed townhomes, as grossly irresponsible. Our school system is already overcrowded within the county. This will only serve to exacerbate the situation. Specifically, the Dowron District is already the most densely concentrated area within the county outside of Hopyard Farm. Adding another potential mass concentration of kids to the school district where our performances is already declining, not to mention in the most densely populated area. With a full elementary school will only serve to exacerbate the negative impacts on the quality of schooling our children receive. We need to focus on filling our tax base with non-population adding businesses, not more dense concentrations of population. Property tax grabs are not the long-term solution and we all know it. Let's get our house in order first, build the infrastructure the county desperately needs for the people already here, then consider adding dense population developments. I'm fine with this area ultimately being developed, but not in this manner. Again, allowing 75 townhomes in this development is grossly irresponsible from a county caretaking standpoint and extremely short-sighted, much obliged Brett Maffet. So that's all we have to read in. I'll defer to Mr. Dines if there's anybody online that would like to speak.
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Vice Sheriff, if I may, I did speak with a Lowell Brayley over the phone. He wasn't able to be here tonight, but he wanted to express his concerns over the speed of cars on Owens Drive. And he expects that to be made worse with the new development. And would like to see the reduced speed earlier on Owens Drive before it reaches Deep Cove Landing.
Okay. Thank you. And if that's the entirety or the totality of the comments tonight, then we will close the public comment period at this point and bring it back to the planning commission for discussion. I'll give Mr. Decordo a chance to take his seat. Ladies and gentlemen?
I was here in 2017 when this was a A2 by right cluster. I supported it at 10 with reservations of 42 lots because of the entrance issue. I did support it, however, because of, I viewed this as a cluster done right and that they were accessing public utilities to get these smaller lots. But I don't see, I had reservations at the time on the entrances and doubling the density is just, I just don't see it as a, it's a non-starter for me. And if you want to talk about the exceptions, I'm prepared to talk about the exceptions, but I'm not willing to go for the rezoning personally.
Want to go down the line, Mr. Kendrick?
You know, I have a lot of mixed emotions about this one. We know that growth in the county is inevitable. We've seen it over the last, I've seen it over the last 35 years that I've lived here. Whether it's by right, growth and development, or whether it's by one of those mechanisms we've put in place to try to control the growth. We don't believe as a body, and I think this is a consistent thought, that we just want to let growth just happen uncontrolled. We established some development districts to try to concentrate the growth in those areas so that we could leave the majority of the county in a rural nature, protect the rivers on either side of us, do a number of those kind of things to keep the character that so many people seem to value in this county. So this development is in the development area that we set aside. You know, the changes that the applicant is asking for is probably an improvement, although I share the concern about jumping from 42 units to 100 units. Particularly at the prices that have been thrown around. I don't know what the single-family homes are expected to go for, but certainly this property has become a lot more profitable because of the increase in the number of units thrown on it. But we've got cluster developments and we did it on purpose to try to leave more acreage open in its natural state. I've been out to the site, went out today, drove around, realized that the roads are only partially in. Did not walk down through the woods where the wet area was. I'll admit that, but I took a look down through there. There appears to have been considerable amount of disturbance over time. I'm not sure exactly when. It would be nice if it was restored to a more natural kind of estate. But, so some of the fixes that this particular applicant is asking for make a lot of sense. Size of it bothers me. The fact that only a partial amount of the roads are in place. And it was very unclear to me in their application package, whether the, I don't remember the name of it, the road, Wildflower Way, going out to where the 75 townhomes are proposed is going to be improved or exactly what? If it's not being improved, I really dislike this. If we're going to allow growth in the development area, it should be quality growth. All right. I have a lot of heartache with a single entrance into the site because comments made are true. You know, you have a fire in a townhouse, it doesn't necessarily stick to one unit. And I've seen people in situations with fire, their first thought is to run. You know, and that's a normal human reaction. But while they're running out in the fire department and, you know, emergency services are trying to get in, one entrance just seems like a horrible thought. Interpartial connectors, I could sort of live without them being provided if we had a second way in and out of the development. I could go for, I could even go for a partial rezoning, but I'm hesitant to approve 75 units as part of that. But I'm hesitant to approve seventy-five units as part, as part of that. That just seems a lot. When I, when I get into past those kinds of issues and I get into the numbers of this game, I, I am not comfortable that the numbers that the applicant is throwing out or anything other than the minimum estimate they could come up with. You know, we've set guidelines for things and, and we talk about the floor, you know, the minimum, minimum amount. But I don't expect developers to come in here and just build to the floor. I expect them to, you know, to, at least not on everything. I, I expect them to do a little bit better than the bare minimum. Traffic on Owens is a real problem. I've seen it. We've had development along Owens for the last several years. We all know it's a, it's a horrible drive back down through there, not a very good road. What I don't want to see is us turn into some of the areas of Stafford that I'm familiar with. These little subdivisions, single entrances hanging off of roads that aren't very good to begin with and just throwing a lot more traffic on them. I was here in seventeen or fifteen when this project was originally approved. I gotta admit, I don't remember too much about it. I, I would like to think that I wasn't excited about it if I, if I actually attended that meeting. But, you know, it's done. Forty-two units, I guess, you know, it's already done. We'd have to live with it if we could, but I appreciate the applicant recognizing that some of that area just shouldn't be developed. You know, and I guess somebody didn't do their due diligence when they originally bought the property. That's unfortunate. I, I don't know. I got a lot of mixed emotions here. It's doing a lot of the things that we want to do. Growth in the right area, maybe not this particular site, but in the right general area. The numbers, the estimate to the, to the number of children going into our school system seems to be low. I tend to believe the, the school board, when they turn to us and, and provide numbers saying that they're already at capacity at Potomac. It's been a long time since my kids went there, but, you know, I do remember the trailers. I hated the thought of them even bringing them in. I'm glad that they're not there at the moment. So we are going to see, we've already seen in the capital improvements plan, you know, proposals for additional growth for, uh, for school buildings. Right? Don't know where the money's coming from at the moment, but we know that it's inevitable that we're gonna have to increase our, our footprint in our school, um, buildings. Traffic on the road. I, I find the estimates for the impact to life safety incredibly low. I mean, I walked through some of those numbers just as one of the people in the audience did. Fire and safety at seven hundred eighty-three dollars roughly per unit comes to a total of about, total of about seventy-eight thousand dollars for all one hundred units. That, that doesn't pay for a full-time, you know, one additional full-time employee in fire or, or the sheriff's office, given all the equipment they have and support that they have to have above and beyond just their salary. You know, I, I just don't see the numbers adding up. When I start thinking about doing a rezoning, I start thinking about the benefit to the county as a whole. The extra housing would be good. Not everybody wants to do a, a, uh, single-family residence with a lot of land around it. Some people want townhouses. I don't know if they want them at three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars per unit. That's not exactly an entry level kind of house in my thought. I've got a, I got a twenty-seven-year-old son living in Nassis right now, who's starting to think about getting out of the renting and buying. And he's making a pretty good salary working for a, a tech company up there and, you know, four hundred thousand dollars is a stretch for a single person trying to get a house. Married couple with all the expenses, that's still an expensive, you know, first home. Maybe I'm just old and out of touch with property prices, but I don't see it as entry level. I know our teachers and a lot of our county employees are not being very generously reimbursed for their efforts. I don't know that two hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred and fif- two thousand and five hundred dollar grant is gonna do that much for them. I mean, twenty-five hundred dollars won't even cover closing costs, much less part of the down payment on one. I don't know. I got a lot of problems here.
So you say.
For every positive I come up with, I seem to come up with two negatives. So I just don't, right now, I just don't see it as being in the best interest of the county to approve the rezoning. I'd like to work with the applicant. I'd like to see this project finished rather than abandoned. I would like to see it finished rather than a whole bunch of crappy homes built on really crappy lots that are only gonna pose problems for the poor people who do wind up buying them. But I don't think this application is getting me to that point. So.
Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Ms. Flyley?
Yeah, I'm on board with a lot of what he just said. Um, I think there is a need for R three zoning. And I know it fits the comprehensive plan. But everything else about this project seems like it's going to cause a lot of issues. Um, I've lived in high-density housing. I can tell you that the, uh, ratio for acreage to townhomes might mathematically be correct as presented, but these homes are crammed on top of each other and realistically, the, the number doesn't represent what it's gonna look like. So my biggest issues are safety. Owens Road is tricky and Owens and Dogon Road intersection is tricky. And then the schools. If we did rezone it, I think we, I would have some more comments about, uh, some of the exceptions that they're asking for. Cause I see them being problematic as well.
I think, um, I think that they, you're right. I think that you and Mr. Kendrick are exactly right that, um, you can see the problems, but I also think that the builders need that too. We act as if they don't, we don't, they don't see them or that they're not gonna act upon them. Change is hard. Change is something that it comes, whether you like it or not. And you can't sit in a capsule forever. So at some point, you have to at least entertain, uh, some change. Affordable housing, I mean, who, I think we've been down that road before. We've talked about defined affordable housing. No one could. Especially as inflation is at the rate that it is now. So, um, a house that was two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars fifteen years ago is now four hundred thousand. However, salaries increase as well. So, um, no, but to just shun them out or to say, hey, this is my whole laundry list of, of things that I think might be an issue or might not change. I think you need to have the, the opportunity to at least address it. Maybe perhaps in a, in a revised plan. I don't know. But, uh, I'm open to it.
DeVries?
I'll just reiterate, reiterate what I've already said. It was a, it was a fairly poor design at, uh, by right cluster in twenty seventeen. It's a very poor design for one hundred units, doubling that density. That's really the bottom line. It's just a poor, poor design. I, I, I can't. I think the evidence is clear that it takes three exceptions just to get to the rezoning.
Right. So I, I can say, I remember when we did this in twenty seventeen, it was one of the first cluster ones that we had and, um, and I think at the time it was a little bit. It was, it was different, right? I mean, it was the first one of those ones we'd seen. So now it's become a little bit more normal. I too had some reservations about at the time, but I, I will say I do appreciate that, the applicant's thoroughness in the application. Because it is a good application. We don't always see that. So, so I'll give kudos to that. My concerns are, um, parking. Um, it, it looks really tight within the hundred, um, within the, within the town, seventy-five townhome areas. A lot of folks have talked about runoff. I'd like to see what we wanted to discuss about that specifically, if there's been any studies on it. And then ingress and egress. And I'll, I'll tell you, I mean, like, so to address the question earlier, I've not been in that piece of land lately, but I spent the latter part of the eighties and all the way to nineteen ninety-seven, working at what used to be a Napa store right at the corner of two oh six and Owens Drive. And I can tell you that intersection was bad then, and that was thirty years ago. So I know it hadn't gotten any better. And so I guess from that standpoint, the, the single entrance really gives me some pause and I would, I would, to kind of echo Mr. Kendrick's sentiments, I think it'd be great to work with the applicant, maybe neck down the number and perhaps get a little bit more reasonable number of homes in there to be situated with a single ingress, egress, so that we wouldn't be concerned maybe with the traffic issues or the, or the, the fire and rescue issues. So that's, that's sort of where I'm at with it. But I do kind of echo Mr. DeVries sentiments too, that it takes us three exceptions to get there. It's kind of a, kind of a lot, a lot to ask. So, Mr. Mars?
This, this subdivision was originally approved and, and I think we need to do what we can do to get it to completion. I again, don't love the density. I guess if we get the applicants up later, um, I don't understand why Hazel Nut Drive is not used as another entrance. That would make sense to me. I don't know why that's, I believe it's open now, but anyway. Hazel Nut Drive is a question of mine. Parking is definitely an issue, having that many townhouses with one spot in the garage and one spot in the driveway. And then no parking spots anywhere else for someone to park. Uh, my concern would be the turnaround at the end, which would be used for the fire truck will probably be where all the extra cars end up. And, I mean, you'll just be clogged up so that any EMS that came in couldn't turn around to get back out. The width of that road, I'm not sure of either, which would be, would be a question if we, if we can speak with the applicants when we get done going around. So those, those are, those are my, should I ask him now on Hazel Nut or is that okay?
Sure.
It was okay. You want to speak? Hazel Nut, why are we not opening or using Hazel Nut?
Good evening, good evening, Commissioner. Uh, my name is Jay Hicks. I'm with Gerald Properties. Hazel Nut, I mean, we may be confusing the roads, but Hazel Nut is the main entrance.
Okay.
While the way.
The one on the side that goes down to two oh six?
Okay, then, uh, there's a, essentially a driveway now that was, is proposed to be an emergency gated entrance into the property.
I think, yeah, I think that's the one where.
And currently provides an access to a house that's there that's not part of the project.
Okay.
And there, it also serves a pump station, which we've already built and is ready to come online that we spent a million dollars on.
Okay.
But, but I think there's a thought that dumping any traffic like that onto two oh six in that location wouldn't be beneficial to anyone.
I mean, I ju- it just gives you another way out. So that's not, you don't own that property.
We, we have not included it in the project. As, as we can see the square around.
Sure.
This is, this is, this area here is explosive. Where the cell is proposed to. Happy working very closely with, with Sheriff's Department. I had a thought, agreed that emergency access would be. Emergency access would also be an alternative exit. Right here, we have a pump station for the work.
I would, in twenty seventeen, that was a compelling argument for getting around the, the number of accesses, that there would be at least emergency access.
I remember that.
But I disagree with the statement that it's good for emergency egress because it's gonna have a knock box, knocks box on it. I don't know how homeowners could get past that gate.
What I mean with, by meaning it's a good alternative is if there was an emergency situation, I would anticipate that the emergency responders would open that gate in the event of, of being necessary.
Okay.
It's not gonna be available to the residents.
So even the HOA wouldn't have access to that knocks, knocks box.
I imagine the HOA would have access to that.
They would.
But there would be pretty strict regulations over its use. And I don't believe they would independently be able to. That's an interesting, that's an interesting proposal. I'm not sure about that.
But again, you know, that was compelling in twenty seventeen for twenty twenty.
Reason for not opening it is because of two oh six or?
It was not, we've really worked really well and, and a long time with the county and nobody believes that was a good idea.
Okay. Cause both sides of that are commercial properties.
And the original proposal, I think even back, if, I don't know if I remember exactly, went back to two thousand and seven because there's some knowledge I learned tonight, but two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and seventeen, it was adopted to only have one entrance. I imagine some of these thoughts were in play at that time.
I think there are also issues with site views on two oh six for that being, uh, an intersection, site distance views.
Okay.
Well, I know when you're heading east on two oh six and you go by where that road is, that, right in the lower left corner, that's Bowhead Services and you're coming downhill. And if you're not paying attention, it's a good price, place to lose it. And, and I, my experiences of commuting into that base for thirty-some years is that a lot of people speed there in the morning. So it's, it's an awkward little place to have a road coming out on two oh six. I, I could see it being dangerous. Now, is it an emergency entrance? Maybe. It's still awkward.
Okay.
I know that, uh, the planned entrance is right where the speed limit changes from twenty-five to forty-five. So when I drove out there, literally past the, the residential houses, I started to speed up. Immediately there's that entrance. So that part of two oh six as well is either forty or forty-five. So I don't know if changing the speed limit for either one of those entrances would make them safer.
Was, was that access road planned to be asphalt? Is that the access road?
I do not believe so. I believe it would remain gravel.
That's all I have. Yeah.
Ms. Fox?
I mean, I, I'd like to approve a project in this general area. I'd like to approve a project with, uh, a townhouse type, uh, alternatives for folks. I just think in its present form, this is a bit too big of a bite for the county to, to bite off and chew. Uh, I think it's, it's, frankly, there's just too many units shoehorned onto the site. And I also have some concern and some skepticism over some of the impact analysis. The number of school placements and some other things that give me some pause. But, uh, I would encourage you to, you know, maybe rethink some of this and come back and maybe optimize this a bit. One thing that also just jumps out at me, and I'm not an expert in this area, but when we talk about mobility around the site for, for fire, rescue and so on, I'm, at least in, in its current form, I'm concerned that, uh, there is no ability to circle up Hazel Nut Lane back onto Wildflower Lane, this, you know, where the townhomes are. I mean, even if it might mean losing a, a unit somewhere, it seems to me that when you, that single entrance coming in there onto Hazel Nut Lane, you go towards the back, you need to be able to circle up and come back down the opposite direction down Wildflower Lane in some fashion. I know, again, that, that could cost you perhaps, uh, some, uh, unit space. And I'm, I'm not an expert in this area again, but. And I'm, I'm not an expert in this area again, but it looks like people, they'll, they'll be, you know, the, parking is already extremely tight there on Wildflower Lane. And if people have guests coming over on the holidays, you know, the, the, there'll be a third more cars there from people's visitors, that type of thing. And not being able to have the option of going, making a circular route through there, I think could be troublesome. Anyway, by reducing the density, maybe you can fix that problem just by doing that. I don't know. But so final, my final message would be, uh, I think in a sense you're, you're pushing on an open door. It's just banging into a townhouse. That's, that's the only problem.
But I have a, I have a question for the middle. What is your estimation of the project being complete from, let's see, you, you get the green light. When would that? What would the timeframe look like completion wise?
You're looking at, uh, two to three years before homes are actually being constructed to the point where they're being lived in. And there's an impact on the schools. At least three years out would be estimated before the schools would be impacted. Complete build out would be with about six.
Six years. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
I would, if not for, um, support rezoning this parcel to R3. It's a high ground. It's on a ridge. It's, uh, healthy and a wholesome place for people to live. Frankly, I'd. I, I wish it, it's, well, the issue to me is the traffic. And what kind of tools do we have in our box to deal with it? We've got the major users. We have the base. We have, um, the base gets, we can work on a grant, get an overpass, get a tunnel, get a mass transit, get a base bus, get. A solution, solution. We get V dot in here. And I don't know why we haven't already because the situation is untenable and unlivable now for the residents in that area. I mean, this should be a priority. We petition the government and get some answers. And now the base has resources to mitigate their impact in our community, which traffic specifically is. So there are federal resources. I don't know what state resources are available, but fix it. So we can do this. We can meet the objectives of transitional housing for our elderly, for young, for the kids' state. So the kids do stay here. You know, uh. Affordable housing. Is defined in statute or guidelines for affordable housing. And this is at the high end. If those numbers hold up and, uh. You know, for the median income, you're spending less than 30% of your gross on housing. And this is sort of in there, you know, it's, it hits the mark. The state is going to demand we do something we don't, probably may not want to do unless we can show the state that we are mindful, planning, and we're executing, uh, to meet state and national goals for affordable housing. So, you know, if not for the traffic, I, I really don't know how I'd vote. The traffic and the lack of the second exit are, are deal breakers for me. I just can't get around that. But I would approve the zoning and approve the cul-de-sac and approve the. Note the second one. It has to have two accesses, accesses. The inter parcel connection and the cul-de-sac lane, I think are reasonable requests for a project like this.
All right. So we've, uh, had discussion amongst commissioners. I'll ask if there's any additional questions for either staff or the applicant. At this time, uh, we could entertain that. And if not, I would recommend that, uh, we look for a motion. We've got three motions coming up. So, uh, let's first, first go around if there's any additional questions for staff or the applicant.
Sorry, I, I do have a question probably for staff. So I understand the length of the cul-de-sac applies to Hazel Nut. And that length is determined from Wildflower Lane. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So Wildflower Lane also ends in a cul-de-sac. Is that not, does that not need an exception because you're counting, uh.
The.
Peter Lane as a, as a road? But we really don't know for sure whether or not it's ever going to be buildable because of the amount of water?
Don't know if we can specify that.
Yes, under this.
Get an easy.
Not necessarily the amount of water, but, um, based on it being con, con, um, connected in the future. But yes, in this case it was viewed as, um, as a street.
So. So I guess what I'd like to suggest is that we table this for tonight. To give the applicant an opportunity to think about our comments and to come back to the planning office here. And see if they want to modify anything or.
I'm going to just give that to Mr. Kendrick. I think, um, I think they deserve a vote one way or the other. I think we've kicked this can down the road enough.
The Craig Lewis.
But.
Insult me a little bit here. If we vote to say no to these exceptions. Is there a time limit before they can come back to us with a revised plan?
Not if you say no, but if the board were to say no, there would be a time limit.
Would, we've done this before and I apologize. It's been a while. If we defer to the applicant and ask if they would like second shot of this, is that?
You can certainly ask.
Okay. We could.
Thank you, Members of the Commission. I also want to thank all the people that, uh, reside in King George County that were willing to show up and spend their time with us tonight because they did offer some valuable comments. With all due respect to the commission, we'd like to have a vote tonight.
Okay. All right. I'm going to go back to, uh, the original question on the table. If there's any additional questions for staff or the applicant, we can get those out now. If not, we can go ahead and make a motion and roll with it. Again, we're looking for three, three motions, uh, exception one, two, and three.
I'm going to start with the rezoning.
That would be the first one. Um, rezoning for case application 22 dash 02 Z 01.
I'm going to read number two. I move to recommend denial of rezoning, rezoning application case number 2202 Z 01 to rezone. With proppers, expat 9 dash 10 parcels, one through 42, A, B, C, A, B, and C portion. From A2 rural agricultural district to R3 multifamily dwelling district. This recommendation is based on increased density concerns and insufficient mitigation of impacts to traffic. And primary road access limitations and internal traffic circulation limitations.
Motion's been made.
A second.
Motion's been made in second at all in favor. Opposed. Motion passes. Looking for a second exception on, um, request, uh, to direct access, um, for primary or secondary road entrances required by the planning commission. Section 8 dot 3 dot 1B. Again, we are looking for a motion on that particular request.
All right. Uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, uh, I move to recommend denial of the subdivision exception request for an exception. From the, uh, from the planning commission's authority to require more than one direct access to a primary or secondary road entrance under New York, under King George subdivision ordinance section 8.3.1B. This recommendation is based on the subdivision ordinance section allowing the planning commission to require two entrances for subdivisions between 36 and 100 lots. And increased density from the existing subdivision. Additionally, the limited road frontage does not make an additional entrance impractical based on the applicant's statement in the May 22, 2023 exception letter. That future access has been provided.
Motion's been made in second at all in favor. Opposed. Motion passes. Looking for a motion on the third, um, which is the request, uh, exemption request for the inter parcel connector, uh, pursuant to King George section 8 dot 3 dot 1C. We're almost there.
I'll do it. I'm going to read number one. I move to recommend approval of the subdivision exception request for a reduction in the number of interparcial connections from two to one. By allowing Peter Lane as proffered to remain a gravel road and not be constructed in accordance with V dot standards. This recommendation is based on the likely presence of wetlands at the inter parcel connection site, which is a consideration providing such an exception under King George subdivision ordinance section 8.3.1D. Additionally, even if Peter Lane, if the Peter Lane inter parcel connection is required and constructed to V dot standards, the road will not be eligible for V dot acceptance and maintenance due to the road not serving any homes. A single entrance was previously proved for the existing subdivision.
Motion's been made in second at all in favor. Motion passes. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We appreciate you taking time and, uh, speaking up. And I guess this will go, hold on, we got another one? Cul-de-sac, Bob, sorry. It's getting late, baby. Cul-de-sac.
If I may, Vice Chairman, I did not get, um, Ms. Flatley's vote. Okay, thank you.
All right. Sorry about that. Jumped the gun. Request for a maximum cul-de-sac length, uh, exception to the maximum, uh, cul-de-sac length requirement pursuant to King George section 8 dot 3 dot 5A.
I move to recommend denial of the subdivision exception request for an increase. In the allowable cul-de-sac length. This recommendation is based on the applicant's prior knowledge of the road Hazel Nut Lane being previously constructed in a manner inconsistent with the R3 zone maximum length requirement. Additionally, the applicant has not provided convincing information to indicate the cul-de-sac is temporary and will become an inter parcel connection in the future.
Motion's been made. Motion's been made in second at all in favor.
Aye.
It's posed. Motion passes. All right. And that wraps up that portion of the business tonight. Again, I want to thank everybody for coming out. Thank you for taking time. Thank you for scratching your opinions. And on to the next order of business, which is, anybody keeping score at home, old business of which we have none, new business of which we had none. And to the director's report, Mr. Pankati, interim director of community, community development, over to you, sir.
Just give everyone a second.
So somebody explained.
I will, I go ahead and, um. Mr. Parker, are you ready to continue?
I'm sorry, Mr. Pankati.
Are you ready to continue?
Absolutely. Let's roll with it.
So I just have a, a few things I wanted to highlight. As you're probably already aware, the Board of Supervisors did approve the, uh, Birchwood rezoning. As well as the special exception request, the proper amendment and the, um, comprehensive plan amendments as proposed. As for the comprehensive plan amendment, that only, um, affected the parcels that were part of the rezoning application. And I'm not sure if this was mentioned at the last meeting, but as for the Potomac Landing, um, exception request, those were both denied by the board.
Affirmed their recommendation.
Excuse me?
They.
No, they denied both of them outright.
So. Yeah. So, so they didn't listen to us at all. I know.
I would also.
So.
I missed the last Board of Supervisors meeting, but the previous one where they carried that whole discussion over. There, there was a lot of discussion about just what the financial situation was in terms of income in, into the county versus how much the county had to give back as a rebate. Were there any answers to this?
I was there. The Davidson Group. Presented.
Davenport, just for the record.
Yeah, if I, if I may, they, um, presented gross revenue only is still the only available public information. So not net of any incentives that may or may not be under consideration.
Yeah, I find, I'd still love to know that answer and I find it unfortunate that they didn't resolve that.
I had it done.
Pardon?
I had it done.
You had it done?
Yes. And the numbers fall neatly within. Davenport's, the applicant and another, the other applicant, the gas guy, the hydrogen guy.
Well, maybe you can explain that to me after we're done.
Yeah, maybe we should take that one offline. Just a suggestion. So.
Let the record show, tonight is Mr. Pankati's wife's birthday.
That's right.
And one other thing I wanted to mention is there is going to be a work session with the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors at the end of this month on the 26.
Can we get a quorum this time, do you think?
I would.
I don't know. It doesn't seem to, I don't know, we're irrelevant anymore anyway, so. Oh, I'm not. I'm just, you know, it's just if, if we spend a lot of time on things and if we're, and if we're not, if we're not regarded.
And so, and so take it, take it this way.
No, I wasn't. I was on vacation.
So two things, Mr. Parker. One, we, we've consistently done our diligence, right? When it comes to these matters.
We have.
But secondly, we have, that'd be a stark reminder. It's a recommendation.
It is a recommendation.
It's all it is.
But it's also our time spent away from our families to try to do what we think is best for the county when it's completely disregarded on many occasions. So.
With that, my director's report is over.
All right. All right. Thank you all. So that's, uh, I think that's all we have. Other than I'll just say, good job, gentlemen, tonight on present, presenting. Very nice. And with that being said, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
There's seven for the work session. Are they still?
Take the clock. Yep.
Okay.
All right. Motion's been made. Is he going to get a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second at all in favor. Opposed. Motion passes. Good night, everybody.